And welcome. It's five o'clock and we're glad to see you all here tonight. We're going to reconvene the Board of County Commissioners meeting October the 11th for the evening meeting. We're glad to see everybody here. Looks like technical issues as everybody seats. I will say that there's extra space in Grace Night. If any of you are feeling a bit crowded in here, you may go there as well. And you can see what's happening and you can hear what's happening. And if you want to speak, we'll make sure that you know when the time is that you can speak too. So if you get a little tight in here, you're welcome to go in there. It's a friendly place, too.
Madam Chair, what's the...
All right.
...go through kind of the process?
Yes, yes. This is not a quasi judicial meeting. And so what we're going to do is to ask our staff to make presentation first. And then after staff has their presentation, then we will ask the applicant to make their presentation. And then what we will do is have public comment. Thomas Hawkins, I understand, is speaking for several of you and is taking as... Thomas, do you have the names of the folks too that you were gonna... Mr. Hawkins was gonna submit names to us of the people that he's speaking for.
Mr. Hornby, who is the president of We Care, has that list and we can provide it to you now or at the beginning of public comment, whichever is convenient.
All right, that's fine, that's fine. And when you're ready, then you bring the list up to us and we'll call the names to make sure they're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And if you're in Grace Night and your name is called, we'll send somebody there if we need to. Or you can hear us call your name here. Thank you. All right, so we're going to start tonight with our presentation. Mr. Jerry Bruington, a good friend of mine.
Madam Chair, good evening. Jerry Bruington, Senior Planner, Alachua County Department of Growth Management. The first and only item this evening is CPA 01-22. This is a request for a large-scale land use amendment from Recreation to Low Density Residential, one to four dwelling units an acre with some associated text amendments. Before I get started, Madam Chair, just a couple of housekeeping items. First of all, there was a late comment that we got yesterday afternoon. A paper copy was given, so you should have that. All the other comments were uploaded to the Share File site and are available for the public and you at any point to look at for those public comments. And again, we receive them on an ongoing basis, so we kind of batch them in the public comment section of our Share File site, which again are available and will always be available for the public. Second item, Madam Chair, is that this item was properly advertised and proof of publication has been provided to the clerk. This is a legislative item. And Madam Chair, I'm also going to give you probably a 60-second tutorial on transmittal hearings. This is what is known as a transmittal hearing. The applicant is requesting a large-scale amendment. This is a land use change as well as associated text amendments. By statute, this is defined as a large-scale amendment. And what that means is that there's actually two hearings before the Board of County Commissioners or can be up to two hearings before the Board of County Commissioners. This is the first of those hearings and it is called a transmittal hearing. What you will be doing is either voting to transmit or not to transmit this item to the Department of Economic Opportunity in Tallahassee. What will happen is if the board votes to transmit, it can go to the DEO for their comment and review. They have a 30-day window in which to do that once they have received it. The board can also opt to not transmit, but either way, there is no action actually taken on the item this evening. The board can hear the item, transmit it, but not, you know, they are not taking an action on the item. It is merely a transmittal hearing. So at this point, what you were hearing before is an item where the board will take an action at the end of the evening if they choose to, to either transmit this large-scale amendment to the DEO or not transmit it to the DEO. And so there are two options there for the board to do at the conclusion of any deliberations that they may have as far as transmittal options for them this evening. With that being said, that is the 60-second tutorial on transmittals. And certainly if you have any questions regarding that, our staff are here. Ms. Daniels is here and Mr. Hanson, as well as other county staff are also here that can answer any questions about the transmittal process itself. And so with that, staff will get underway with their presentation. We have a short presentation regarding this item. This is a request, again, for a large-scale land use amendment. The land use amendment and text amendments associated with it are for the West End Golf Course Site. The West End Golf Course is located on the north side of Newberry Road across from the town of Tioga. And the golf course site is approximately 75 acres in size. And you can see the location map, larger area around the West End Golf Course to the west of I-75 on the north side of Newberry Road. This is an aerial view of the property of the golf course as it basically exists now. Again, the outline of the site is for the entire 75 acres. And you can see that this is part of the larger West End Plan Development, which was established many years ago. And the 75 acres that are the subject of this request are actually part of the golf course that was there before the West End Development started. The golf course dates back to the 1960s. And this is an aerial view of that property. The land use, Madam Chair, right now for this property is recreation. That is a recreation land use. And basically, per the PD, what is allowed in the recreation land use at this time is a golf course and associated functions associated with that golf course. That is what is allowed there right now. But the land use for the property is recreation. The site has a PD or Plan Development zoning district. The entirety of the West End PD or Plan Development encompasses not only this golf course, but the surrounding areas, which are residential areas that have been developed over time as part of that overall plan development. These are usually single-family attached, single-family detached types of development. And development is still going on. What we call Unit C or Face C in the northwest corner adjacent to Arbor Greens is still going on at the present time, as well as a couple of other areas around West End. Terra West End, for example, are still being developed at this time. The land use change portion of this is requested as follows. You saw the... Previously, I'd shown you the 75-acre golf course area that is all recreation land use right now. The proposal for the land use change is to dedicate a portion of this approximately half, 38 acres, to conversion to low-density residential land use. That low-density residential land use allows one to four dwelling units per acre. So nominally, you could get up to four dwelling units over this approximately 38 acres. The applicant is also proffering text amendments that would actually limit the number of single-family units that would be developed as part of this, which is their right to do. They can offer text language for our comprehensive plan that can limit the number of units that are going to be developed on the site, even though the land use may allow more. But you can see this, what I would call a cutout of low-density residential land, approximately, again, 37 and a half, 38 acres, with the residual portion remaining as a recreation land use on the property. So that green portion outside of where it says low-density is the portion of the site that would remain as recreation land use and where they are proposing no land use changes. Some background, Madam Chair. The property is the subject of this comprehensive plan amendment is the golf course portion of the West End PD. The West End PD was established via zoning item Z 2588 on February 19th of 1981, with the golf course itself having been actually first developed in the 1960s. At that time, the zoning master plan for West End clearly showed the nature and extent of residential development intended to occur for those parcels that surrounded the golf course. These included varying types of residential development, including townhomes, quadruplexes, apartments, single-family, and a configuration that has remained essentially unchanged since that time. These residential areas have been developed in numerous phases, with development and construction of the final phases still ongoing. An initial redevelopment proposal for the golf course property was submitted to the Alachua County Growth Management Office in 2020. This consisted of a land use change over the entire 75-acre parcel, as opposed to the portion that I just showed you, as well as a rezoning request that could, at maximum capacity, have accommodated 418 residential units, as well as over 219,000 square feet of non-residential space. This application was subsequently withdrawn by the applicant on July 28th of last year. The current application was submitted by the same applicant on December 22nd of last year and consisted of a single-family residential development-only, associated comprehensive plan language that would have limited the subdivision to no more than 140 single-family units. This was once again accompanied by an associated plan development. This particular application was then subsequently modified on March 24th of this year to reduce the permitted residential units to no more, excuse me, than 70, 7-0 dwelling units. The applicant has decided to advance only the comprehensive plan, map, and associated text amendments to public hearing at this time. So you are not hearing the PD portion of their application. Right now, we are only looking at the legislative portion, which is the large-scale text amendment and land use amendment. The applicant has also submitted a tentative development, site development plan. I would note that this is not in any way, shape, or form part of the actual large-scale text amendment or associated land use amendment, but rather just giving an indication of how a potential development of 70 units on this property could occur. Again, this is not being adopted by the board, even if they would choose to go forward with the land use amendment. It is simply an idea of what the large-scale, or excuse me, the associated PD would look like with 70 residential units. But again, this is not an actual site plan that is being looked at as far as being approved by the board with these applications for the text amendment and the land use amendment. Staff analysis. Staff has analyzed the proposed request for consistency with the comprehensive plan. The West End PD is immediately adjacent to the Jonesville Activity Center. However, in looking at the proposed application, the applicant's proposal calls for development at the lower end of the density range, or less than two dwelling units per acre. The applicant's proposed comprehensive plan policies eliminate the potential of density bonuses that are inherent with development of a TND or traditional neighborhood development as found in Chapter 407 of our code. The proposal thus does not present an optimal use of land within the cluster as envisioned by Strategy 2 of the plan's future land use element. Policy 1.4.1 of the Future Land Use Element states that use of proven and innovative concepts for residential development, such as a TND or TOD, are strongly encouraged. This application proposes that Policy A, that specifically prohibits a TND on the subject property. In other words, they are not going to be able to develop a TND with the associated text amendments that are going with this application. Objective 1.6 of the Future Land Use Element states that the TNDs provide for interconnected, mixed-use development through site-specific and design standards that create pedestrian and bicycle-friendly communities, that reduce per capita greenhouse emissions and vehicular trips on external roadways, and that provide development patterns that are transit-supportive. The proposed Future Land Use Element limits the maximum number of units to 70, which again is under two units per acre. The primary connection is proposed at the existing golf course entrance across from the town of Tioga, with a potential second means of ingress and egress being provided through Terra West End. The proposed plan would not reduce vehicular trips on an external roadway, but rather is designed to use Newberry Road as the primary means of ingress and egress from the property. The application materials do not make a strong case for the proposed development being pedestrian and bicycle-friendly, or indeed transit-supportive, consistent with this objective. Third, Policy 3.1.1 of the Energy Element states that Alachua County shall promote efficient land use patterns through the policies of the Future Land Use Element, Transportation Mobility Element, and this element. The objective of this policy is to promote energy-efficient land use patterns that reduce travel costs and encourage long-term carbon sequestration. The plan envisions compact development at densities to support mass or rapid transit whenever possible and interconnected to surrounding development. This is meant to reduce carbon emissions and greenhouse gases through design by reducing vehicular trips. By proposing a low-density development whose primary connection is Newberry Road, the applicant is diverging from the strategies envisioned in Policy 3.1.1 and instead providing a more standardized subdivision proposal that does not account for many of the measures encouraged by this policy. Lastly, Madam Chair, Policy 4.1.1 of the Energy Element states that the county shall implement transportation and mobility capital improvements plans that promote compact, mixed-use development patterns in accordance with Policy 3.1.1 of this element. Plans shall include funding for transportation modes that provide an alternative to single-occupant automobiles. And again, Madam Chair, the county's transportation mobility plan and capital improvements element include a transit route along the Newberry Road all the way to the Jonesville Activity Center. A component of this proposal is the need to achieve residential densities sufficient to support continued operation of such an extension. The West End Golf Course property, if developed at the higher end of densities promoted through the TND standards found in our Unified Land Development Code, would be far better poised to support such transit improvements along this important corridor. The applicant's proposal to provide density at less than two units per acre does fall short of the policy's recommendation for a compact, mixed-use development. Therefore, with those particular policies and objectives in mind, Madam Chair, staff does recommend that the B.O.C.C. not transmit the requested comprehensive plan, map, and text amendments to the DEO in Tallahassee for their review and comment. And that, Madam Chair, concludes staff presentation. We are all here to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioners, anything yet? No? All right. All right, thank you. All right, we can hear from the applicant now.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name is Jay Brown. I'm a civil engineer and the president of JB Pro.
Madam Chair.
We're representing...
Hey, Jay, if you're able to upload that to Ms. or the clerk... Oh, he did, okay. Oh, never mind.
No problem.
Thank you for the copy, Jay.
He's on it.
That's what I meant to say.
We can thank your staff. We've...
Thank you.
...gave it to him electronically.
Thank you, sir.
Again, Jay Brown with JB Pro, and I'm happy to represent the Terra Group. And I'll just let you know that Mr. McTara is here today, too, so he would be available for any questions that the board might have after we get through our presentation. And as you can see tonight, there are a lot of folks here. It's probably going to be a little bit of a long night when we hear all this commentary. So I hope you'll indulge us because our... I'm usually one to give very brief presentations and as little as possible, but I think we do have a lot of ground to cover. So we'll try to get through it as quickly as we can. So as far as our presentation tonight, we're going to tell you a little bit more about the background and the history. We'll go through our analysis of the land use change request. We'll cover some of the transportation issues. And then Mr. Klash Wager from EDA will give you his land planning analysis of this. And then I'll come back and summarize things. So again, our project team consists of myself with JB Pro, EDA. It's a collaboration that we worked together on this project. And then also, Mr. McTara is here from the Terra Group. And, you know, as you may know, they have developed a lot of projects all over Alachua County and beyond. I think you know where this project is, but it's interesting to note how it sits right in the middle of so many other developments. And clearly, it is your classic infill project. And that's what we're supposed to be doing when we have properties like this that has all the infrastructure available to serve it. It is also, I should note, north of the Tioga Town Center, which provides a lot of additional services, retail, and different kinds of mix of uses right across the street. We'll actually share the same connection. So they... Staff mentioned that the golf course predated some of the development around. It actually opened in 1969. It's an 18-hole executive golf course. It's one of the few lighted golf courses, or it was one of the few lighted golf courses in this country. The current owners of the property had purchased in 1997 and the course closed in 2019. And they cited the higher cost of maintenance, not enough play, that sort of thing, for the reason why it was closed. And it's been, you know, really derelict ever since for the last few years. I just want to point out some things about golf courses. You may hear some talk tonight about how, you know, this site is still, could be used as a golf course. And clearly, in some way, shape, or form, it's possible. But the trends are that golf courses have been reduced across this country. Since 2009, there's been 1,600 golf courses closed. Every year since 2011, at least 100 golf courses are closed in this country. Many additional courses are bought by government and two-thirds of them lose money. So there's just many number of reasons, but probably one of the bigger reasons is there's just a lot less play. A lot less people are playing golf now than they used to. So here, we can see that in Gainesville. The trends here in Gainesville show that more than anywhere almost. We now have, and I think there are four active courses...
Excuse me, no, no, no.
I think this says there's actually three. I believe there's four active golf courses. But even since we first did this presentation, the Gainesville Country Club has closed down. So we have Meadowbrook closed down. Turkey Creek was closed for a decade. The Gainesville Country Club is closed. And two of the other courses are subsidized by the city of Gainesville, Ironwood, and then the UF Golf Course by UF. So it's safe to say that Gainesville isn't the most prolific golfing community. So I think it's a pretty good case for the reason why the golf course is not active, why it's not a golf course currently. So then, to talk about our request, and Mr. Bruington did a good job of outlining the request, so I won't, you know, go over it too much, but just to say that we are requesting a change, a land use change from Recreation to Low Density Residential. And it's right at 38 acres of property that we're doing so. So then, kind of where are we today? We're here before you for the very first time, but we've been working on this project for about two and a half to three years, actually. And we have held numerous workshops. We've had five meetings and workshops with the surrounding communities. And we felt that was very important from the very beginning when we first started it. And when Mr. McTara first approached me about this project, we knew that it was going to be very important to involve the community. And they're certainly involved. I mean, you can see that tonight. But I just want you to know that we have spent a lot of time and effort trying to work for the best solution to develop this property. And we've created, you know, dozens of designs and presented those. So it all started with our first layout that we did in the summer of 2020. And when staff made their presentation, they talked a lot about the TND, the traditional neighborhood design. And there are certainly policies in the comp plan and in the land development regulations that encourage TNDs, especially for a property of this size. So that was our first approach. And we've designed other TNDs and for larger properties, it's certainly encouraged. So we brought together a plan that we thought was a classic TND design that met all of the county's criteria and policies. It had 247 single-family residential units, it had 240 multifamily residential units, it had 83,000 square feet of non-residential use, which included a hotel. And there was a hotelier that was very interested in this site. And we also presented this plan to the county and showed them what we were doing. And then we met with the neighborhood with this plan. And this was right in the middle of COVID. And so we had a neighborhood workshop that was presented in Zoom. It's the first neighborhood workshop, the first neighborhood workshop that we had ever done that before. And we had, you know, hundreds of folks that were participating in this workshop. And I can tell you that there was a whole lot of people that didn't like what we were presenting. And they gave us numerous reasons. It was too dense. There was not enough open space. There was too much traffic. They talked about losing their views that they had bought in the golf course community and were used to the open space around them, even though the golf course had closed. They, you know, they were concerned about reduction in property values. They said that, you know, they liked the golf course. There was dozens of reasons why they didn't like this plan. So we, you know, heard all that data, it was pretty consistent, and we decided to kind of regroup and talk about things. We went back to coordinate with the county staff. And the county staff was really encouraging us to do a connection, a vehicular connection into the West End community. And so we tried to look at our different options. And this plan that's showing on the screen right now shows some options to the north. So we talked to staff about that. They were very insistent on trying to make this northern vehicular connection. So what we decided to do is go back to the neighborhood and have another meeting, a second meeting. And in this particular meeting, we just wanted to tell them about that. And we wanted to say we were open to whatever ideas they had. Okay? So we didn't... We said, "We just want to have a blank slate here. Yes, this is our plan. This is what we've tried to do. We've got the TND. But we do want to hear what you all have to say." We bought a questionnaire. We asked them to give us input. And, you know, we got a lot of input. First of all, they clearly did not want those northern connections. And we can't do that vehicular connection without the cooperation of their communities because they own the land, it's part of their HOA. So they also made it very clear that it was still... They didn't like the project. It was too dense. They didn't like the multifamily residential. They thought we were removing too many trees. Interestingly, we got a lot of mixed feelings on the recreation side of things in terms of whether a golf course was needed or whether it should be a park or what the, you know... There was no consensus among the neighbors as to what that should be. But they clearly made it very clear to us that they wouldn't support this development and that they really wanted a golf course or a recreation facility. So we took all that feedback. And one of the things that we heard in that second meeting was that they were concerned about our recreation facilities and using their recreation facilities. And there was a lot of discussion about their active recreation facilities in this meeting. So Mr. McTara had an idea of introducing some recreation facilities, if you see on this layout, kind of in the northwest and on the north, and putting them in a location that would be close to the neighbors so that... And then sharing those. He would build the recreation facilities and he would allow them to use his recreation facilities along with his residents and his development. And he really picked up on that as a concern of the neighbors. And so he kind of proffered this plan. And we went back and we talked to see if adding in the recreation kind of for the neighboring communities would move the needle on the project, if they thought that would make a difference. And again, we got back and, you know, what we were hearing is, "Look, you know, that's nice, but that's really not what we want, what we want. We just, we really don't want this big TND project in our backyard. We want open space." So negative feedback. And again, we just decided that we had to go back to the drawing board. At this point, it was very clear that the neighbors were organized, that they were totally opposed to the project that we were presenting. And we felt it would be a very difficult path to try to do something and take a big TND, a dense project with lots of residents and mix of uses and non-residential, and put it in this location. It just didn't seem like it was fitting in the neighborhood. So that is when we were coordinating with staff and we withdrew our application and we did go back to the drawing board. So we came up with a new plan. Mr. McTara wants to develop this project. He thinks it's a beautiful site. And if you've been out there, it is a beautiful site. And again, it's perfectly situated with infrastructure all around it. It's the classic infill project. It's a great redevelopment site. So what we decided to do is we removed the hotel. We removed the multifamily residential. We actually removed all the non-residential development, all the commercial. And we decreased the residential density from 487 units down to 140 units. And one of the big drivers of that was to reduce the traffic impact. Obviously, if we have 487 residential units and 83,000 square foot of commercial and a hotel, we're going to have a lot more traffic than if we had just a single-family residential development. We also kind of went back to the drawing board on the whole design of the project in terms of the environmental situation, the view shed that people were looking for, the trees, all those type of things. And we decided that we would really try to work hard on this new plan and make sure that we could save the best trees on the property and create more open space. So that's when what I'm calling here today kind of an informed vision, because what we create is we created a whole newly-designed layout. And although staff mentioned today that this layout is not necessarily what you would see when you come back, we used this layout to carve out the precise location and legal description and area of the land that we've asked for this comp plan amendment. So what you're seeing tonight is what we're proposing because it fits within this shape of property that we've set aside, this 38 acres that we've set aside for the comp plan amendment. So we came back with this design. It has 140 units. If you can see in the center of the view, there is a, what we call a central green in this location. And so that is where there's a great line of trees, especially some really great, nice live oaks. And we felt like designing the residential component with that is a big... And we felt like designing the residential component with that as a big feature, kind of a central green, would really do a great job. And we also looked at other trees throughout the development in terms of ways that we could save more trees. And then the biggest thing that we did is we added a ton more landscaping on the perimeter and open service space on the perimeter of the project so that every single owner in the West End would now have a very similar view to what they have right now on the golf course. So all along the perimeter, everybody that is adjacent to the former golf course is still adjacent to large, vast open spaces throughout on the perimeter. So there isn't a single residence that had that before that won't have that now. So we felt, we felt that it essentially created almost half of the project, over half of the project as open space. So I don't know about you, but there's very few development projects that set aside that much open space for a project. We even looked at how you could take that open space. And one of the things that guided it was the potential that we could even still, within the open space that we're setting aside, we could have a nine-hole golf course. So you can see here, I laid out the golf course holes and how it would work out. And you'd have, you could have a nine-hole golf course on the perimeter. It follows much of the existing layout. The view sheds would remain the same. Of course, one of the issues is who would maintain a golf course. Mr. Mctara is not in the golf course business. And so, you know, we had had some discussions about that. But what we really felt was the thing to do was to turn that external thirty-seven acres and turn it into a park. And that's when we started floating the idea of making this external area a county park. And it was clear that the neighborhood wanted additional parkland. And so we took over half of the property and we turned it into a park. And so what we have done is we have offered this land to the county. And Mr. Mctara is willing to dedicate, and frankly, this is millions of dollars of property that he's willing to dedicate to the county. And so it was a, it was a major, major change to our plan to put this open space there. So then after we did that, we held another workshop. And we, we had it at a church, Abiding Savior, out on Newberry Road, and was a very large room. And it was very well attended. Probably two hundred people came out to the, to our fourth workshop. And we presented this hundred and forty lot design. We really had great participation. We were super glad that so many people came out. Frankly, most of the people still expressed negativity towards our development. And they were very skeptical about our desire to donate this land to the county to make it a park. And there was all kinds of comments about that. And they made it clear, many of them, that they didn't want anything but a recreation area here. But that's really, and that's what you're going to hear these people tell you tonight. They're going to say, look, we know we don't own this property. Somebody else owns it, but we are entitled for this to remain a recreation area. And, you know, I'm not sure that that's totally fair. However, that's what they want. And they're citizens and they're entitled to their position and, and, you know, how they feel. But we felt that this was a very good compromise and a very generous offer to the county. And what the other thing that that did in, in the context of this layout is that we also changed our application, as staff mentioned. So we no longer are asking for a land use change of this land that's the park. So it can't be developed because we're not even requesting to change that. It's going to stay recreation. So all the land adjacent to all the development is going to remain recreation. And through this process, we coordinated with Alachua County Growth Management Staff. We had numerous meetings with staff. Just discussed this all through this two and a half year process that we've been on. Staff was still concerned about not having that northern roadway connection. And one of the ways that they led us to continue to develop this plan is that the northern roadway connection was, in their minds, you know, somewhat critical for interconnectivity. And they suggested that if we were not impacting traffic on Newberry Road more than the existing golf course, then that northern connection wouldn't be as much of a concern. So we wanted to bring staff along with this project. We worked really hard with staff. And, you know, they were very good at working with us as well. So we decided to make an even further change to the plan. And that's when we decided to decrease the residential units from a hundred and forty down to seventy. And what that did is it increased the green space even more. And it reduced the trip generation for this seventy-unit development to less trips than the golf course was generating. So that's another thing that I don't think you're going to find very often when someone brings a development in front of you and suggests that this new development is going to have less traffic. Because traffic is always one of the biggest things that folks complain about, you know? Everybody, you know, is very concerned about the next guy that comes along and puts more trips on the road. And so I think this was unique in the sense that we could actually have a development plan that had less trips than was originally there with the golf course. So again, this is our current plan that's in the application. It's single-family detached. We have comp plan language that limits it to a maximum of seventy single-family residential units. There's no multifamily, no commercial. Those are the trips here that are listed. So the existing golf course generated, per our traffic study, nine hundred and eight daily trips. And the residential development with seventy lots is only seven hundred and twenty-seven trips. And over half of the property is set up as open space. So not only is it the thirty-seven acres that we're dedicating to the county as a park, but then within the residential development, there's another ten acres of open space. So there's almost forty-five acres of this seventy-five acres that's set aside as open space for this development. And all of this was about, again, trying to find something that would fit within this community. So I just wanted to kind of show you a little bit on an absolute latest aerial photo and aerial view. This is a, we, our drone did this aerial very recently. So this is about as current as it can be. It was within the last few days. And then when you look at this, this is the current layout of seventy lots that sits on top of that aerial. So you can see that center line of trees there when you look at that aerial and the central green. And then when you overlay it, you can see, you know, how that is saved. So all those really nice trees are saved. And then you can, you can even see on here the multi-use trails and stuff that goes through this county park, this open space that we're recommending to donate. And then when you look at our previous plan, which was a hundred and forty lots, it's almost identical in terms of the impact that it, that it takes up in terms of the land. So that's where you can see, you can even kind of see some of the old golf course here. I just thought that might be something that would be interesting to see how it overlays. And this park land that we're proposing to donate to the county would actually be the third largest recreational park in Alachua County. Our developer is willing to relinquish control completely to the county. There's been recent studies of the county saying that a park could be used in this particular area. And we think this is a great solution. We're offering this land to the county at no cost to the county. And we propose that Alachua County would then decide what uses can be done in this park. So the county and their Parks and Recreation Staff has the, would have the ability to decide and work with the neighborhood of what are the types of uses that would be best served in this park area. That you can have a complete community planning process. We will participate in that process and be a part of that process as well. So I just, I want to jump into a little bit of some of the transportation issues, but that's where we are right now with what we've proposed in our application. And traffic has been a big issue on this throughout, so I just wanted to cover a couple of things. So first of all is the level of service and traffic. And in Alachua County, there are, there's an urban transportation mobility, mobility district program. And there's three districts, and we're in the northwest district. And that's how you determine whether or not you have enough capacity on the roadway systems. And so based on the latest data, this, there is, we're in the northwest mobility area. And there is plenty of available capacity for the trip generation that we're proposing. So there's almost, you know, three hundred thousand trips, average daily trips that are available. So our little nine hundred trips really won't make, you know, much of an impact. And, and I should also keep in mind that the redevelopment is going to generate similar trips. There is sufficient capacity in the district. And this is the county's process. This is not our process. This is the county's process of how they measure capacity. And we meet that capacity. And the county doesn't say otherwise. So you can handle that compliance through a number of ways. But you can, you can make payments into the multimodal transportation system, which is the way most people do that. And, and we would do, you know, that unless there was other transportation needs that the county had in this area that we could participate in. So then as far as the interconnectivity, there's been a lot of discussion about that. And we wanted to make sure we understand that. So in our plan, we present a multi-use trail throughout this county park that uses some of the areas that are currently used in the golf course and creates this system. And I know folks in the neighborhood, around the surrounding communities, they love to go onto the golf course property and walk the trails. And, and I would too if I lived there. I think it's wonderful that they have that. And so it immediately jumped out as something in this park that we think would be critical. And it would be very important. And we would participate and make sure that that most, multi-use trail network is available. And so throughout that, we made sure that we had lots of opportunities to have pedestrian connections to the communities. And so you can look there where the red circles are, and these are all the places that make sense to have connections to open areas on the surrounding properties where the residents can come into the park, get on the trail system and walk through the open area. And that's from a standpoint of pedestrian and bicycular connections through the multi-use trail system. The primary access is, of course, on Newberry Road. And that entrance location lines up exactly with the Tioga Town Center entrance across the street. And then also in terms of some of the policies about interconnectivity, when Terra West End was developed, which is the development in the southeast of this villages of West End community, the county provided, the county required that that development provide vehicular roadway connections internal to the golf course. So that in the future, if the golf course was redeveloped, they would have interconnectivity. So this is kind of a plan that shows that, that illustrates that. So this was the plan for Terra West End. And these are the two locations on the west side where roads were stubbed into the golf course. And keep in mind, this is the county requiring roadway connections from a new development into the golf course because of the fact that they understood that this was a prime property that could be redeveloped. These are, these are just pictures of kind of the signs that are there right now that say future through street. So the expectation from the county and the approved plans were that these would be connected. And so this is where we can provide secondary access. And then when you, when you would go into Terra West End, you would be able to connect to a hundred and twenty-fourth Boulevard. And this connection is here. There's a left in and you can take a left out. So you could go to the north on a hundred and twenty-fourth Boulevard. You can't get on that roadway system from the north side internally on our development, but you can connect to a hundred and twenty-fourth Boulevard and provide a secondary access. And this is a picture of that location that shows the Terra West End, the entrance and, and the ability to turn left in and turn left out here. And with that, I'm going to let Mr. Schwager come up and kind of talk about some of the land planning issues.
While you're coming up, we have listed public comment. And we've gotten past that for public comment from any, for anyone who isn't.
Not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda. Not on the agenda. And that was, if we can just take.
Do you want to pause for that?
Yes, if you don't mind, please. Yes, because five-thirty is what we had advertised. And I don't know if there's someone.
And we're about halfway through our presentation.
Wonderful, wonderful. We're ready.
So could you just remind people this is not related to this?
Yes, it's, it's not related to the West End. Thank you. Three minutes.
Anthony Johnson, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Make sure those, glad to have the overhead.
All right. Can we do that on, there we got it. They're on it.
Perfect size. Great. Madam Chair, I'm here to talk about MMTM, as I always talk about. I'm talking about it in the context of now the traffic and roads and how the county is dealing with it. Okay? I was at a meeting recently with the city, whom you are coordinating a project with Southwest Sixty-second Boulevard, which is nothing more than a frontage road that's being proposed to be built along I-75 for one point one miles. And what we were told in that, in that meeting is that, as you see the underlying red portion there, it's going to reduce traffic, reduce congestion on I-75, that little one mile stretch. And you know, that's not going to happen. Okay? So those type of fallacies that we've been told about MMTM, this is a transit-oriented development, a transit-oriented district, where there's supposed to be some type of mass transit. And with the lack of mass transit, all you're going to get is cars. The scooter bikes, the rollerblades and all the things that we're told that people will be on through our comprehensive plan, they're not on them. I mean, you may get some recreation weekend riders out, but for the most part, people use their cars here in Alachua County. And this idea that there's no cars here, this proves it. I mean, but you see, we see you are spending a twenty million, that's a twenty million dollar project, by the way. FDOT is paying for most of it, collaboration between the city and county. But if that's a TOD, a transit-oriented development, we should be putting a rail system in here, some type of light rail in. We're going to need that. As we hear about Hurricane Ian and all the people that were going to be displaced and how the sea, the sea level rise, how all the people on the coast are going to be migrating to the inland counties, roads like this is going to be overrun. This is not going to last. We need to come up with real solutions for our traffic in our road system here. These little patchwork jobs like this for twenty million dollars, it's just a waste of money, waste of time. It's inevitable that this is all going to be overrun. You're not going to be able to get the cars into Celebration Point, to the event center. The whole point of it was if there's an event at the event center, well, how are we going to get out? How are the people going to get out? Well, we pull a little patchwork job in here like this so they can use that to get out, to get back to where they want to go. Because trying to, everybody's trying to get onto Alachua Road, it's not going to work. So I'm saying, think big, go bigger. This won't work. Sit down and rethink the comp plan. And just come up with something that's actually feasible, that's going to actually work in the long run. These little patchwork jobs, it works now.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone, excuse me, excuse me, this, this isn't a performance, you guys. Anyone else like to speak to something not on the agenda? Welcome.
Thank you. I actually made a copy to all of you. I didn't know you had this fancy little thing here. I actually want to talk a little bit about the one percent surtax fact sheet that we have found online. And we actually have some questions about it that we've tried to get answers to from the county, from the Wild Spaces Public Places, but with no luck. And the first thing I'd kind of like to address is the, the statement in here where it says it's going to cost every household fifty-seven dollars on top of what we are paying now in the surtax. What we've tried to find out is where do you get that number? It's put in here as fifty-seven dollars more than you're paying now. And it's a hundred percent increase on the surtax, so that adds up to a hundred and fourteen dollars. If we do some positive numbers on households in, in Alachua County, it's a hundred and five thousand households, forty-nine million dollars a year, we, we're kind of off here. Then we can take a little bit to the tourists. Let's say the tourists pay some, which they do, and which you stated here. But as you can see, you don't state how much. You said which, while difficult to track a large percentage of the surtax revenue would come from out-of-town visitors and commuters to Alachua County. Large percentage. Can you, a large percentage, is it twenty million from visitors? We're not talking land, though. I mean, twenty, forty-nine million. And you're saying that a large percentage of that is coming from tourists. But you're not bagging up the numbers. And you're not answering our questions either. So it, I've done some numbers. We're talking over three hundred dollars per household. And I deducted sixteen million to tourists on that one. And we are still at over three hundred. one, and we are still at over $300 per household. And I added the numbers on that one, 105,000 households, which is probably a little bit on the high end if you look on the general part. Then I also look at the fact about affordable housing. I read on Wild Spaces Public Places, there's been a lot of you guys being out there saying, hey, we're going to build affordable houses, but Wild Spaces Public Places, they actually state you cannot build from the surtax. You can buy more land, which you've been doing pretty well since 2020. You can buy more land, but you can't build from those money. But you're telling people you don't, I mean, I think this is very misleading. You're not being fair with the public.
Thank you for your questions. No, 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 nope. I'm an old lady school teacher, middle school, 22 years, y'all, with a behavior disorders degree, so just don't push me. And I haven't had to use this all year, not all year. All right, thank you. Next speaker. We'll address some of these questions as you all finish up.
So I have some concerns about the nomination. We have been working very diligently and seeking out public records as far as your land acquisitions and the nomination process. I would like some direction, some understanding of how that works. Who nominates those? What do you consider a citizen? What do you consider public? What do you consider an organization? We've asked relevant questions to the county. Nobody seems to want to answer our questions. And when we do ask these questions, we're ping-ponged from one person, one department to another. No one will give us the facts. That's all we want, are the facts. We want the numbers. We want an understanding of what's going on with this money. Do we have a plan? Do we have a plan in place of what you're going to use this money for with the roads, with the fire departments, with the affordable housing? Does, does Ford County Commissioners have a plan in place at this point, or is it something that we're just going to make up as we go along? I'm, I'm very concerned about how things are moving along, some of these acquisitions. These poor people here. Let's nominate that portion so that they don't lose their portion. You know, you've bought up...
Excuse me, you guys, let her finish.
You've bought up so much property in this county, and these people are having to fight for their rights to keep their property, but you're not willing to unless, I mean, they're going to give you 37 acres, that's wonderful. But how much money have you spent of our tax dollars, our surtax money, to buy other property that nobody can even get on? Nobody can even enter those properties. That's, I said my piece, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come right on.
My name is Virginia Fowles. I bought property in 2020 in Alachua County. It took me 11 months to get water and electric. I contacted my county commissioner. Still took 11 months. I have 4,000 acres of county Wild Spaces property around me. Now there is no security. You've got people trespassing. You don't have the money for cleanup, the garbage. All hours of the night, gunshots, everything else. You call the police, they can't get out. I'm wondering what's going to do for our safety in these communities with this Wild Spaces.
Excuse me, could you tell me where you live? Close, Hawthorne? Hawthorne, all right, thank you.
Zone 4.
All right, next speaker. All right, if there's no one else, Commissioners, do we have anyone who wants to address some of these questions? You want us, oh, beg your pardon, come right on.
I want to say something in favor of Wild Spaces Public Places. It's Prairie Creek...
Tell us your name, tell us your name.
Travis Oakman.
Thank you, Travis.
Prairie Creek Conservation Cemetery is out in like, like Micanopee, and they keep buying up land, and it's a natural cemetery. It's where our mother's buried, so that's what they're doing with some of that money. It's a wonderful place. You can go out there, hang out with your loved ones, and see Sand Hill cranes.
Thank you, Travis.
I think money will...
Thank you. All right, next speaker, come on. Were you coming in from Grace, Mark, I mean, next door, the Grace Night? No. All right, thank you. I didn't know if there was more people in there.
My name is Sherelle Quail, and I'm here on a completely different topic than Wild Park, Wild Spaces. I'm a concerned parent of, that plays with the soccer club that plays at Kanapaha Park, Veterans Memorial Park. I'm here myself, but I represent several other parents. We have a signed letter we sent to county parks, and the, in trying to weigh in on a decision for them to allow another team, another club to play, and this is in dispute because there's been an injunction. There's been one, Legacy Sports Academy has played there since 1999, and some of their coaches set up another, left and set up a club with the exact same name and changed the end and tricked a lot of parents into thinking that they were signing up for the same club. And they now are seeking a park with lights, and there's only Jonesville and Kanapaha. We tried to point out to, to the county parks that there is also Cone Park, and we suggested, please, we feel that this is creating an unsafe environment for even our kids, because there's been a lot of bad feelings about this splitting, kind of a theft of a business and splitting up all of our teams. So, and youth sports can get quite worked up sometimes, as we know, which has happened in Thailand. So we'd, I'd like to submit the letter that we sent to the county, to the parks, and ask that you might weigh in and reconsider. I have a few names here. We have found many more parents who are also equally concerned, who didn't know what they were signing up for, but we'd just like to dispute that decision made by the park.
Thank you so much. Would you give that to the clerk, please? Thank you. And thank you for bringing that to our attention. Anyone else? All right, we will close citizen comment. Commissioners, are we, can...
Do you have, want to ask some of those questions?
Yes, this is what I was going to ask, if, if any of our Commissioners would like to respond to the questions that these folks had about the surtax.
Chair, I can...
Commissioner?
Some of the response, so I don't have those numbers in front of me, so I can't do the details, but we do know that about 30% or so of our sales tax revenues are generated by tourists coming and visiting our community, and that doesn't necessarily, no, I don't mean those numbers. I mean the detail, like the detailed numbers that our staff use to generate the fact sheet. I don't have those in front of me, so I, and they are not here, because I don't see Mark here or Tommy.
I have some good numbers I could share.
Go for it.
No, if, I can't share tonight, but if you all would like, I can come to you, or you can make an appointment to come see us. I'm kind of surprised that you're saying you're not hearing from us, because generally, we're probably some of the most responsive folks, and I'm sorry if...
I think so, yeah.
Okay, okay, but I'm just saying, if you all really, you know, have, wants these, these answers, we're available. And, go ahead.
I guess I was just going to say, on the, on the affordable housing thing, actually, 15% of the sales tax revenue can be used to build workforce housing. If you look at the statute, I don't, our attorney is at the end, so he could probably chime in on this. But, and so in addition to purchasing land for affordable housing, so what we're saying when we say we're going to build affordable housing is, one, there's that 15%, but also in purchasing land and doing public-private partnerships with developers who do affordable housing, that would be a big part of this, that would be a big part of this, is trying to acquire land to make the provision of affordable housing more tenable, because if you take the land cost out of the equation, then you get the opportunity to actually create something that's affordable. So that's what we mean when we say affordable housing, and the county, and that's only the county's portion. The county has voted to put 70% of our allocated dollars of the half-cent additional to roads projects and 30% to affordable housing of the half-cent. The other half-cent would remain in Wild Spaces Public Places and would be used the same way it has been used for provision of recreational space and conservation space. And we have added two new positions to our, or three new positions, to our audit board, including somebody with auditing and accounting experience and somebody with real estate experience in order to make sure that we have the right kind of people to look at these projects as we expand the funding that we're providing.
And I'd like to chime in, too. The reference you made to Wild Spaces, being able to buy property like this, that's what it's for. And we have bought pieces of property like this, that people letting us know. And, and the way it is nominated, you can nominate your land, or anybody, you could nominate anybody's land. And land goes on to a list, or goes before a board, because there've been a few properties that I have presented for the board or had a neighbor do that, so that it goes, and then this board looks at the land to see how it scores in terms of...
Not this board, the land.
Not this board, and yes, there's, the land, yeah. So anybody can nominate a piece of property, anybody can. And if these folks decided that that's what they wanted to do, they could absolutely do that. And that's what the Wild Spaces Public Places money is for. And I, I don't know if you've had a chance out to get to Cusco Willa yet, but that land has been bought by you. The, it's a camp, and it's going to be, we're working on getting it more and more developed every year. It's been used for summer camp for kids, free camp for the last two summers that it's been open. The swimming pool is available now to the folks and anybody in the county who wants to come in the weekends to use it. So we are trying to get, make sure that these properties that you're buying are available to you. So you are owners. So the Wild Spaces Public Places money is the first go-to that anybody like this group has says, well, what about Wild Spaces money? Can we use that? So we know it's a valuable pot of money that people have put in together throughout the county, and so if there's something that you see out by you that you want saved, preserved for your use, nominate it.
If there was, if there's a problem with security on one of those properties, if you wouldn't mind, I know you probably don't want to announce your address.
People that take care of it in our area, and they serve the good wildlife, put it all the time, Alachua County deputies, I don't know if you all are, or Andy, I don't know what. I never see them over on that.
So, okay.
There is no protection. What we're going to end up with is...
Yeah, let us know. Yeah, 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 just, just, y'all need to let us know. Call us, come us, we'll come there. There's not any of us up here who will not come find you if you'll invite us.
And it is...
Okay, we'll, we'll talk, we'll talk, I promise, we'll talk some more, I promise.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else?
No.
All right, then, let's, let's turn it back over to Clay. Thank you, Clay. Yeah, please.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm Clay Schwager, a certified land planner. I work with EDA consultants. I'd like to thank Mr. McTara and Jay Brown for letting me participate in this process. I am providing you some testimony on land planning issues. Essentially, I'm providing my opinion and a review of your comprehensive plan on those issues, similar to what county staff did. Some of those issues we agree on and some we disagree, and so we provide that information to you tonight. I'll be as quick as I can to get, let the audience speak. I know they're ready to. As Jerry indicated, this is a comprehensive plan amendment. It's a map amendment and a text amendment related to the approximately 75-acre property that formerly was the home of the West End Golf Course. The inner 38 acres, which you can see the proposed map on the right, would be a low-density residential land use designation, and the remaining portion on the perimeter would be recreation. As Jay indicated, there's several justifications for the change. Jay spoke to the status of golf courses in general and some of the issues that are defining that industry. The comprehensive plan has a policy that indicates that no reasonably economically beneficial use remains of the property owner under an existing land use change category. That's a, that's a basis to come and ask for an amendment and a change. The site redevelopment requires a map amendment because of that, in our opinion. The redevelopment of the project as an urban infill residential development supports the planning concept of efficient use of land and infrastructure and helps relieve other pressures associated with urban sprawl outside the urban cluster. And we've got some policies that we'd like to go over with you in just a minute that would be specific to this property that would govern what can or can't be do in the, done in the future and would be, if approved, would be put into your comprehensive plan. So as Jay indicated, and what is in our application, there's been a significant amount of community outreach and discussion here. Numerous neighborhood workshops, and I can say without hesitation, this application has changed significantly since the beginning of the process. I know there are still disagreements on what ultimately may or may not happen to the land, but there's no doubt in my mind that major changes have been done to try to increase compatibility to this project and really try to strike a balance of, and a compromise between compatibility, consistency with regulations, and reasonable use of this private property. So I will, I'm going to go through several policies with you. These are all in the future land use element, or at least the beginning ones are. This is one of the core policies, 1321, and it does identify low-density residential as urban in character. It is an urban land use designation, which means that it is an appropriate land use for you all to apply in the urban cluster, particularly for infill development. And in blue at the bottom, the comprehensive plan has definitions, and it actually has a definition of infill, which is development or redevelopment of property surrounded by existing development. So any argument that this is not infill, I would argue that the comp plan provides that definition. Now the decision is what happens in that infill area, of course. Policy 1.2.1.2 indicates the requirement for compatibility with surrounding neighborhood character. There are a lot of statements in here about transitioning of development, respecting existing neighborhoods and development densities, and all that relates to compatibility. In my opinion, county staff is not evaluating that policy when they indicate that this should really be a higher-density project, it should be a TND, it should be something that neither the neighborhood or the applicant is pursuing tonight. So this is an important policy, because as you see in letter D, you should have transitions of intensity of uses that are similar and/or compatible in character of the surrounding neighborhood and community. And this exhibit shows you, and I think Jay had it up earlier, but it just gives you a snapshot of what the densities are in the area today. There's a wide variety between up to almost 10 units per acre, down to just over four units per acre. And so the Tar Club property, just on the 38 acres in the center, is 1.8 units per acre. So it is, it is low. It is lower than the surrounding areas. One of the previous iterations that Jay presented to you was 140 lots, and that would be, that's twice what we're proposing here tonight, and that was still 3.6 units per acre. So it's a, it's a lower density than the surrounding neighborhoods. So as you all know, the comp plan allows TODs and TNDs and all your urban land use categories. This table just simply shows you on the 38 acres for discussion tonight. If there were not any policies to limit development more than what's normally allowed, a TND could be proposed with over 400 units, over two, almost 220,000 square feet of commercial, non-residential, very high-density, very high-density development. So the point of that is, there's a significant amount of entitlements that come along with a land use category of low-density, but we are proposing site-specific amendments to be put in the comp plan to limit the development potential on the property. And again, that'll be put into your comprehensive plan if you, if you agree. That limits the density to no more than 70 lots of single-family detached development. No TNDs, TODs, or cottage neighborhoods on this property. Many times when you see planning applications come before you, and an applicant says, well, we want to rezone the property and do this, but it's just the word of the person there, and the land changes ownership, but if you have something codified, that, that means a lot more. And so that's one of the primary reasons why we have these policies, because we wanted to take some of those really hypothetical scenarios off the table for your consideration. So these are the first three policies that are proposed for the comprehensive plan. The first one, again, just indicates that the interior 38 acres, just the part in yellow, would be a maximum 70 single-family residential units, which is about 1.8 units per acre, solely a single-family detached lots, and that TODs, TODs, cottage neighborhoods are not a permitted use here, so you can consider that specific development proposal. Item B indicates that there shall be an interconnected system, a circulation of access. We do have access to the east and to the south for vehicular use, and then we've got some other slides coming, and I think Jay showed you one, that there's a lot of opportunity for bike imped connections in all directions, particularly to the recreation areas to serve the surrounding developments and what might be proposed in the center area. Letter C is a requirement for a central green open space to be provided in the low-density land use area. As Jay... As Jay mentioned, this is the back of what used to be the driving range at the golf course. There's some beautiful trees, a lot of live oak trees along there, and that, that area would be preserved from development, and you saw that in Mr. Brown's concept plans. And so, that's important, it's important to us, and we thought it would be good to put it in writing. So, letter D is regarding the recreation area that's proposed to remain, and that that recreation future land use designation shall be dedicated to Alatra County for the use and enjoyment of residents of all adjacent neighborhoods in the larger community to provide a permanent usable open space, green space, that will be protected from future development activity, and that all the uses allowed in the comprehensive plan for recreation, which was approved by this board in the last year, it's a mix of active and passive recreation-type uses, would be allowed. You will see a small change in this policy language. Our client, Mr. McTara, would like to make it very clear that his wish is to dedicate this to the county for public use. So, it's, it's outlined in blue in this policy. Letter E, a minimum of 20 acres of the recreation land use area shall be designated and permitted as qualifying open space. Letter F, the recreation land use area shall be open to the public and design linkages provided through interconnected trail network. The nice thing about this property is there's already an interconnected trail network and it can be expanded upon. The former golf course has a lot of trails and paved areas that could be reutilized and added upon. This area right now is not officially open to the public, it's just a private property sitting in, in an unknown status. And so, if this policy was adopted, it becomes open to the public and dedicated to the county to be improved for everyone. And letter G, the recreation future land use area shall be improved at a minimum with the interconnected trail system, as I mentioned. So, the intent here is to provide a clear outline of permitted uses, development limitations, and details regarding the future of this recreation area, and upfront, to master-plan the property in a way that's a win-win, making a permanent green space for recreation for all residents with a reduced development program similar or compatible to the surrounding development pattern. This is just a quick snapshot summary of that TND scenario versus what's being proposed, 418 units versus 70, almost 220,000 square feet of non-residential versus zero in this case. And that's the difference between what this policy means versus not having that policy if the land use was low-density residential. So, there really were just a few issues raised by planning staff that resulted in their recommendation not to transmit this item. One is the question of density, and do we have enough density? Should we be doing more? And then also, just the interconnectivity issue. So, I just want to go through a couple of the, a couple of the strategies in the comp plan that staff indicated. This is one. It, it says minimize the conversion of land from rural to urban uses by maximizing efficient use of available infrastructure and preserving environmentally sensitive areas. This is not a rural area, this is in the urban cluster. The only environmental resource identifying the property is actually in the recreation area to remain, and that there is GRU and utility infrastructure in this area to serve this project, and that this, as defined in the comp plan, is an urban infill type of The second strategy that they cited was to provide a range of urban residential densities within, with the highest densities located in or near activity centers, with lower densities in the outlying rural areas. And so, we are in the urban cluster, we are quite, quite a ways from the cluster line, and we are proposing an urban residential density here as defined in the comp plan. And that we are very close to an activity center, the, including the Teoga Town Center, Publix Shopping Center, Jonesville Activity Centers. There's quite a bit right in that immediate area, and I've got an exhibit in a moment that kind of shows you how people can travel from one place to another and that, as that network continues to grow. Strategy three that was cited was design of individual neighborhoods as addressed amongst his recommendations, found the promotion of interconnectivity. So, I do have some slides to talk about interconnectivity at this time. This is one that you recognize from, from Jay's part of the presentation. We, we do have access, vehicular access to the south, of course, to Newberry Road, and also to 124th Boulevard. So, the land development regulations require a connection on two different sides of a property if you have more than 25 units. So, we feel that we meet that connection requirement in the code. This slide shows, I think, about eight circles, and these are places where there's opportunities for pedestrian connections to the proposed recreation area from adjacent open spaces and common areas that are in the phases of the West End development. And so, policy 1.4.1, essentially, and the subsequent objective there really promotes TOD and TND development in the urban cluster. So, I've kind of discussed that already with you, that we, we feel it's more compatible and appropriate to have a lower-density residential-style development in a small portion, relatively smaller portion of this project versus one of those larger TND-type of projects, because I'm going back to that compatibility provision. There are some energy element policies, and, you know, we, we do feel that we are going to provide and add to the mix of uses in the area and the residential types, that we are in close proximity with a significant amount of commercial activity between the Teoga Town Center, the Jonesville Activity Center, the Will Walk PD. There's quite a bit of retail and employment opportunities there in this area, and we are on a rapid transit corridor. So, this policy, the staff indicated that the golf course property, if developed at the higher end of the density, so TND, would be better to provide transit improvements. Well, we would contend that residential development here, if linked, to allow people to get to Newberry Road, to add to the amount of residents that live in this area, is supporting transit more than an undeveloped property. So, a few other policies. Again, this is the same strategy, but we, you know, to reiterate, we are in the urban cluster, essentially, more or less abutting the activity center and the Teoga Town Center infill in nature with public facilities along a state arterial roadway. And that we, essentially, the same sort of statements that I just made related to providing a range of urban residential densities. This is the neighborhood design standard policy, again, requiring or calling for step density in open spaces to be accessible, and special attention to be provided to the design and development of neighborhood edges, which shall be designed to be integrated into the community. So, this, you know, as Mr. Brown said, I've never been part of a project that's proposed to dedicate or donate half the property, so this is very, very unique project in a lot of ways. Strategy three, creating neighborhoods that are compact and connected to adjacent development. As I indicated, there's at least eight spots that are logical bike and ped connections to this recreation area if it is to be utilized as an active public recreation space. And the comp plan does call for master planning of properties that are under common ownership, and that's what we're trying to do tonight. This is just the comprehensive plan amendment, so we're providing you quite a bit of detail, far more than what a normal map amendment would show, and that's an effort to show everyone what would be done on the property in a master-planned way. Policy 1.2.1, residential areas shall be designed to provide interconnected system. Again, I don't want to repeat myself, but there are many policies that show that we meet the interconnectivity requirements in the comprehensive plan. And this exhibit shows the opportunities for vehicular connections with the arrows shown in red to Newberry Road and to 124th Boulevard. The arrows in green show those interconnectivity for bike and ped opportunities in all directions. The roads in blue are existing streets. As you can see, you can get to 124th Boulevard, you can get to the Arbor Greens Development, you can get to Jonesville Activity Center, you can get to the stoplight at Arbor Greens. And the area, the, I'm sorry, the roads in orange are future roads. There's a Buchanan Trails project that was recently approved north of West End. There is a county project, hopefully soon, to improve 122nd north of the intersection. So, there will be opportunities in the near future to get vehicular connections to the stoplight at 122nd Street. And so, the economic element does promote redevelopment infill in the urban cluster. And that this, this plan does not encourage urban sprawl, as it is redevelopment and infill in the urban cluster. There's many requirements for open space, and this policy would, would exceed that requirement for open space, and would actually provide a significant amount of usable open space for other neighborhoods in the surrounding area. So, all the level of service standards at the comp plan level are met at this time. That includes traffic, water and sewer, schools, drainage, fire emergency services, and solid waste. Schools are just, undergo a plan review at comp plan level, and the school, five-year district facilities plan has indicated there's capacity in the district over the next 10 years to serve this project. You can see the impacts are relatively small. Recreation, the evaluation and appraisal report in the comprehensive plan indicates that the standards for recreation are not only being met but exceeded. That includes activity-based recreation uses, those are county parks, or resource-based. There's almost twice as many acreage, acres of resource-based parks available and over three times the amount for activity-based. And this amendment does propose to add 37 acres to that acreage. Thank you for your time.
May I ask you a question, Clay, really quickly about the schools? When you talk about schools, are these potential, these are schools that would be a result of, of this kind of growth out there? See, I'm, I'm trying to understand how, do you work with the school board to find out whether there's money for concurrency? I mean, in terms of the way these developments, and not just yours, but any of them. How does that work with the school board?
Sure, and staff may hop in in a moment, but I'll just tell you, my take is when we submit an application, we have to fill out a form that goes to staff, and they give it to the school board with the number of residential units proposed, are they multifamily or single-family, and there's a multiplier. And so, in this case, if the project was built out entirely, there could be up to 11 elementary students, five middle, and seven high school.
Oh, I see.
And then they look at their five-year plan.
Excuse me, you guys, we're having a conversation up here, and you're gonna get your turn. I'm sorry, Clay, I apologize.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If you might, just real quick, just so you know, there's a letter from the school board in your backup with the application that speaks to it, Mr. Swager.
All right, well, thank you very much, I did not see it. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, we are winding down here, and we just have a few more slides, and I'm just gonna try to do a summary here.
No, you're doing a fine job, take your time. You all worked hard.
I know, we've heard a lot of stuff, we're gonna try to wrap it up here. So, I think we have a few concerns, and I'm just gonna try to summarize. I think if you, Clay did an exhaustive summary of all the comp plan policies and how we think, or many of the comp plan policies, and how we think this project addresses those comp plan policies. But when you boil down the staff's concerns, it really revolves around a couple of things. Number one, that we're not doing a TND and we don't have enough density. And so, I think throughout our whole process, and I think with the information we've presented to you tonight, I think that it's pretty safe to say that a TND is probably not the best development type to fit in with this community. And so, that has guided us to this point where we are today. And then, in the comp plan and in our land development regulations, if you develop less than 150 units, you're not even required to do a TND. So, this proposal that we have, either the previous plan of 140 units or this plan of 70 units, is not required to be a TND per the comp plan or the land development regulation. So, I think the, there are comp plan policies that encourage that, but given what we've presented, it would not be required. And then, the second of the, what I'll just kind of call the major concerns, is the interconnectivity. And I think we've demonstrated that we have vehicular interconnectivity. For example, our interconnectivity connects to 124th Boulevard, and there was just a plan, and I think Clay mentioned, at Buchanan Trails to the north, that also connected to 124th Boulevard as one of their connections. So, we have two existing stubs from a development to the east, and then the connection that we're making to Newberry Road. So, we have multiple connections, which was required by the comp plan. And then, we have all the pedestrian and bike connections throughout the development to all the adjacent communities. So, I think we've addressed both of those bigger concerns. And then, when we went to the plan board, they were concerned as well, and the biggest input we got from the plan board is that we didn't have enough density. And they said, "Similar to staff, you don't have enough density." So, you know, what we're trying to do is we're trying to balance these needs. You know, we hear from staff, we hear from the plan board that they want more density, but we hear from these neighbors who live in this area, who live in this community, that they don't want a big dense TND or a dense project. So, we thought, when we brought a plan for 140 units, which would have been, I think, Clay slides, so 3.6 units per acre, that that was under low-density residential, which is four units per acre, and then we cut it in half and went down to 1.8 units per acre. So, again, that was to address traffic concerns and to try to, you know, fit into the neighborhood with the least impact possible. Now, staff had some concerns, and I know that you're gonna hear neighbors' concerns. So, I don't know how much of an opportunity we're gonna have to address some of the neighborhood's concerns, surely there's gonna be many. But we've heard a lot of them, and I just thought I would brief, briefly touch on some. There's, you know, we've heard about trust, you know? How can they trust the developer that we're gonna dedicate this park? Well, we've presented to you today that we're not asking to change the land use or rezone the property as recreation, and that we even put language in the comp plan, which will become a part of your pop plan, comp plan, that we will dedicate this land to the county. So, we're not rezoning it, it's staying recreational land use adjacent to their development, and it can't be developed for residential or commercial or anything. We heard lots of comments about traffic, too much traffic, there's too much traffic. I mean, we have presented that we have less traffic than the golf course had. So, I don't, I, I can tell you that I never come before your DRC or you with a project that has less traffic than we started. The nature of every project is that it has more traffic, and there is capacity, so I think we've addressed that. We heard, we've heard concerns about the environment and trees, and I can tell you that we have set aside a majority of all the best trees on this project, we've built the center green, we have about 45 acres of the 75 acres that we're setting aside as open space. Think about that. 45 acres of the 75 acres of this property that Mr. McTara is gonna, is gonna develop is being set aside as open space, not developed. And, and we have ample opportunity, when we go to the next steps of this process, to work with your arborists, environmental protection folks, and make sure we do everything that's appropriate on the environmental side. We heard comments about design quality, and how can we be sure these homes are gonna be good quality and that they're not gonna reduce property values? Well, I can just tell you, the economics of this property and what we're doing and what we've proposed is gonna require this to be a very nice development. And our owner is happy to work with your staff when we get to that point and present our standards so that everybody can see, you know, what type of project it would be, what kind of homes we would build on these single-family homes. And then, of course, you know, parks and recreation, which is probably the biggest thing. These folks lived around a golf course for a long time, some of them recent, maybe some of them for a very long time, and they're used to being at a golf course, but the owner of that property just doesn't want to have a golf course anymore. He ran that business for over 20 years, and it's just not working, and it's time to redevelop this property. We're donating half of that property to the county, and then beyond the 37 acres that we're donating to the county, we're taking 10 acres of the non-donated, and it's gonna be open space and recreation as well. And then, lastly, they're gonna talk a little bit about stormwater possibly, they're gonna say, "Well, we're gonna donate this land, and in this land, you know, a lot of the property is stormwater." So, just so you know, those statistics, there is 38, 37 acres that we're donating, and about 23% of it is gonna have stormwater on it. And a lot of that stormwater that's in that land that we're gonna donate to the county is stormwater that's required because of the development on the perimeter from the existing neighborhoods that discharge their stormwater onto the golf course property and onto the public land. And just to give you an idea, I think a very similar size and scope is Depot Park. So, my company was very fortunate to design Depot Park, this downtown park that everybody loves so much in Gainesville. loves so much in Gainesville. And it is 35 acres in size, okay? We're donating 37 acres, so really close in size. Depot Park has 30% stormwater and I just mentioned, we're going to have about 23%, so a lot less stormwater than Depot Park. And then Depot Park has above that, they have about 18% of conservation land. So almost 50% of Dee, Depot Park is stormwater and, you know, environmentally conservation lands. And so our project has less stormwater than Depot Park. It'd be donating more land available for recreation to the county. So I just, I felt like that was a nice context for you to understand kind of what that means. Because when you look at these little maps, you just kind of see this picture about this big. But if you kind of think Depot Park and the nine-hole golf course, think about how much land it takes if, any of you play golf, if you go play nine holes when I showed the context of how we could do a golf course there. It's a lot of land that the county has a lot to do with and these neighbors, neighbors can participate in how we develop that park. So in conclusion, uh, I think we did a great job of demonstrating how our project conforms to the comp plan. Uh, Clay did a very good job of going through policies, strategies, objectives and how our project, uh, meets the comp plan. We've addressed all the issues raised by staff and we've listened to our neighbors. Uh, we adjusted our plans for no other reason than the neighbors. Uh, we created a little application that's sensitive to the surrounding neighborhoods. It's single-family only, very low density, half the property is set aside as a park. It's sensitive to the environment. We have bike, ped and vehicular interconnectivity and our traffic impact is negligible. Um, it's a classic infill project. Um, it's encouraged by your comprehensive plan to do development like this. And we also understand there's a lot of opposition to it, okay? But this sentence I think is very important, really in its context, community planning. It looks at existing conditions and it balances the situation and it creates compromise and responsible, compatible design for the neighborhood. And I think that's what we've done here. I hope and I would encourage you to give this great consideration. Um, and we would be available after public comment to address any issues that are raised. If you have any questions from us, I'll be here. Obviously Clay will be here. Mr. McTara can answer any questions. And we just thank you for indulging us for this presentation.
Thank you. That's a very thorough presentation. Thank you. All right, Commissioners, do you have anything to say before we start?
I guess, so I have a slew of questions, um, for the applicant, but also questions for staff of the applicant's presentation. But I also want to hear from the public. And so is your thought that we'd hear from the public first and then, and then go back to all our questions? Okay, and that's fine. Who, could I just ask, Madam Chair, who here is going to speak tonight by just a raising of the hands?
Now, we've got a list of, Thomas has got some of those people he's speaking for.
Grace Knight.
All right. Raise your hand if you're not on Thomas's list. Okay.
And other people in Grace Knight.
All right. I don't know if there's anybody in Grace. Uh, there are people in Grace Knight, too? Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, then, Thomas, would you like to start? And, uh, and you, if you've got your list of folks, we will call their names and you all can, we'll call the roll. Yes, please. There, I'll be on that side, right there. There it is, right there. All right, you guys, can you see it? There. Okay. All right. Now, do you have a, a list of those folks? Can you call them, can you call out their names and then you, or let me call out their names and?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If, if your AV crew could put the overhead up, then you'll be able to see the list as well. I'll just go ahead and start reading it in the meantime.
All right. Fellas, have, I don't, there.
Madam Chair, if those names are called, if the individuals would just acknowledge that they are in fact giving up their, uh, three minutes of public comment time to the presentation.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you.
Stephanie Phillips, Masuma Downey.
Wait, is Stephanie here? There, okay. There you go. Thank you.
Dr. Downey.
All right. Thank you.
Diana Rogers. All right. Phyllis Summerlin.
By raising your hands, you all are saying you're giving up your time. Yes, everybody.
Linda Brock. Block, I'm sorry. Kathy Olson.
Thank you.
Robert Matheny. Rhonda Matheny. And Jan Say.
All right, is Jan in here or?
She's right behind.
I should stand up so I can see everybody. Thank you.
The Mathenys are giving up their time. You are talking about pickleball in this.
As much as.
We are now. Okay, okay.
All right. So how many folks is that that gives you three minutes each and then are you including yourself in that as well?
Our own, too.
All right. Okay. 30 minutes.
Madam Chair, I, I know you know me. I'll, I'll introduce myself later. I'll take a moment to introduce Paul Hornby.
But go ahead and introduce yourself for the record.
My name is Thomas Hawkins. I'm a professional planner who's representing We Care.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Thomas. Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you so much for this opportunity and thank you for your service to the community. Greatly appreciated. Um, again, my name is Paul Hornby. I'm the We Care president. Uh, We Care is an acronym for the West End Community Alliance for Recreation and Education. Uh, we are a grassroots community, 501(c)(3) group that's committed to keep the West End property green recreational space. We do support the current existing Recreation Future Land Use Designation and we do ask you, um, to not to transmit the large-scale comprehensive plan, um, in front of you this Our vision in the community is to develop and foster an organization that values a community partnership to support a multi-use, multi-generational recreational space for the entire community to enjoy. Uh, Mr. Brown pretty much covered the, uh, the status, the current status of the course. Um, I'll just add one thing with respect to the profitability of the course. Um, it's, it's been operating as a profitable course for over 50 years, the last 20 years under the current management. Around 2016, um, really through the lack of just poor, poor management and poor business decisions, the course began to decline severely to the point that it had to close in 2019. Um, I just want to make the case here that it's really unfair to equate poor business practices with the interest in golf and recreation opportunities here in the county. There's plenty of interest in golf and recreation, um, opportunities with respect to Gainesville Country Club. That's another example of poor management and business, uh, decisions, nothing to do with interest of, of golf in the community. Meadowbrook was also named, um, and they, they're just challenged with, with some flooding issues, uh, totally out of their control. But I know the owner there is, is still trying to reconstruct that course and also adding a, adding a driving range and we wish him every success in that endeavor. You have this letter in your packets and others, I think, will be speaking to this as well, but this is a land, a letter to the county commissioners from the Land Conservation Board, uh, earlier this year. And I just want to read this one paragraph because it really summarizes where, where the community, uh, sits with this, uh, with this entire process. The recreational space is a pivotal part of the community and this property which serves as an oasis for the community in Western Alachua County where recreation space is limited but land development and urbanization are rapidly expanding across the landscape. That pretty well sums up where, where we are and we do appreciate their, uh, their support and advocacy for us.
Excuse me just a minute. We have not set a timer for him and that's, that was three minutes. So I don't know if your three minutes is?
It's all part with Thomas. So we're asking 30 minutes with both of us.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I beg your pardon.
No, no, it's fine.
Add another few seconds.
No worries. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair. So we also heard from staff with respect to their, their recommendation and also the results of the Planning Commission recommendation. Uh, so we're, we're here simply to ask you to sustain those recommendations and to not transmit this proposed comp plan. Um, we've talked a little bit about, uh, interconnectivity and ingress egress challenges that were pointed out by staff and, and also the, uh, the planning board. Uh, Mr. Brown touched on some of these issues as well. Um, if you look at the, the map on the left, the three stars, uh, along Newberry Road are basically the main ingress egress, uh, points. They're all within a hundred, a few hundred feet of each other and they all dump traffic onto, onto Newberry Road. Uh, there's a lot of discussion about working through Tara West End. Um, if you look at the photograph, uh, this was supplied by one of the residents there. That road which is looking west towards the golf course is Northwest Seventh Place. This is the ingress egress that, that the developer talked about being able to use. It is not a very efficient thoroughfare. If you go by there any, any given time, there are cars parked out on that street, given the limited parking per unit for the residents. This particular case, emergency services were called and they could not even get to, uh, the, the building unit that they needed to, uh, in response to this emergency, given the, uh, the parking situation there. So the other, uh, comment was potentially be getting out to Newberry Road at 136th Street, um, from this particular location at Tara West End on a, on 124th. That in fact turns out to be a 1.7 mile trip where you traverse probably three or four different developments to get out to the light. Again, not a very efficient, um, way to move in and through these communities. Uh, we hear a lot about cluster infill. Um, I think here's a, a pretty good map that represents, um, what cluster infill looks like. These are, you can see the West End property kind of in the, the central right part of the map. The four X's represent developments that are currently pending or under review with Alachua County for development. I believe they all have a status for residential development, so there's no, no question they will end up getting developed. And it does fit with the strategy of infill cluster. We certainly understand that. What's lacking in all this, or the only remnant, uh, that remains is this small little recreation space that's desperately needed in the area. If you look at those, those four X's, represent 1,149 new homes and 128,000 square feet of commercial space. And this is all within a half mile of the golf course. Um, additionally, if you zoom back about a two-mile radius of the West End property, there's an additional 1,600 homes and 125,000 square feet of commercial space that's already been developed or in the pipeline to be developed. Again, Jonesville area desperately needs dedicated recreational space. Uh, We Care has been very active in the community over the past few years. We've had hundreds of residents sign our petition to keep the West End property designated as recreation. We've had hundreds of residents participate in our We Care online survey that identified recreational components, uh, that would support a multi-use, multi-generation recreational property. We've hosted a dozen town halls with hundreds of local residents, uh, this past year in the impacted communities, all favoring to keep the West End property recreational. Uh, through social media, through Facebook, Nextdoor, uh, we've been able to reach out to thousands of individuals in the community, um, and supporters of our initiative. We've had dozens of letters written, uh, to the Board of County Commissioners written or emails submitted. And we've garnered a number of key endorsements in the community, uh, in support of our efforts through the Gator Junior Golf Association, Scott Hampton, UF Golf, Eric Thomas at Ironwood Golf Course, the Native Plant Society. That is due to the fact that there is a state endangered plant on property, uh, that right now would be under a stormwater retention area. Uh, we've also met with and got the support of Senator, State Senator Keith Perry and former County Commissioner Hutch Hutchinson and former Gainesville Mayor Peggy Hanran. Our values support West End as a multi-use, multi-generational recreation space. Our values support and respect the property owners' investment-backed expectations over the past 50 years and moving forward of those that bought into this area with that property as a mainstay, uh, key piece of recreation. And we also, our values respect and support the county's long-term, uh, use plans which has this property in your strategic plan moving forward as recreational space. There are some future possibilities here, um, for this property. You could maintain some golf operations while adding some marketable resource-based recreation opportunities to include pickleball. Mr. Cornell. Pair of fitness course, dog parks, uh, tennis facility, aquatic center, and even looking at adding a community event center for youth education, development, as well as possibly a senior center. This is just a visual, visualization of what this might look like. Sorry, I don't have any fancy graphics. This is just PowerPoint and clip art. Um, but it does demonstrate maybe a nine-hole layout, uh, for golf, maintaining the driving range. And this is not to scale by any means. Uh, walking trail, pair fitness course, aquatic center, dog park, maybe having a clubhouse and sports bar up front. This is what the community is looking for. Not more houses. With all the infill that we're having, um, we need to set aside some decent recreational property. This would be a crown jewel for the county if something like this could materialize. Thank you very much for your time.
Come on, you guys.
Thank you Commissioners for, uh, for the accommodation with speaking for the additional time. We greatly appreciate it. Um, I also want to thank your staff, uh, and the applicant also for providing a lot of clear information that was easy to follow and, and analyzing what the impacts of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment would be. I'm going to ask you to do two things. One is affirm your existing comprehensive plan and second, protect investment-backed expectations. I'm going to go into a little bit more detail into both of those. Um, so first, your, a comprehensive plan, there's some, uh, backup in the, uh, some language in the, the applicant's submitted with the application that maybe your comprehensive plan had been changed administratively to designate this land recreational. I want to assure you that's not the case. Your comprehensive plan's the law. It is the law because you adopted it. The state land planning agencies reviewed it. It's consistent with the Community Planning Act. Um, and here are some of the policies in your comprehensive plan that I think suggest maintaining the Recreation Future Land Use Designation on this property. Um, one, you call for providing for a full range and mix of uses. And I'll talk a little bit about what the land use pattern is in this area and how a decision to not transmit this application is going to help provide for that full range of mixes. Second, your future land use element calls for development to preserve existing amenities. That's absolutely what this property is. It's an existing recreational amenity for the community. Here are the surrounding recreation facilities in this area of Alachua County. The nearest ones are Jonesville Park, Diamond Sports Park and Veterans Memorial Park. If you are driving an automobile, those aren't too far away, between five and 12 minutes. For folks in our community who are trying to access green space by bike or by foot though, these are not close to the site of, uh, the West End Golf Course. They're a long way away. Here's a map, you know, displaying that same point that I acquired from the Trust for Public Land. They've looked throughout the entire Gainesville metro area to identify park locations and identify lands that do not have, uh, easy access to parks and therefore they've identified as having a, a need for a new park. You can see in the western portion of the urbanized area is Jonesville and is identified through this analysis as an area that has a need for a new park. Um, another way to sort of look at this analysis as what the land uses are in the area is by just looking at the proportions of different future land use designations you have on your future land use map. If we start at the front of essentially where the clubhouse is, right there before, in front of the Tioga Town Center, and just draw a big circle with, with about a mile and a half radius, and we count up the acres and just look what proportion they're represented on your future land use map, this is what we get. It's not surprising, most of this image is yellow, 70% of the land is low-density residential, less than 2% is recreation. This is a, this is a pie chart. This reminds me of the budget charts that I used to see at GRU. The big chunk is fuel and everything else falls in the, the small categories. You get the idea, most of the land is residential, a very, very small portion of it is recreational. If you're moving land out of that recreation category into that low-density residential category, you're going in the opposite direction of what your comp plan calls for to provide that mix of uses and to protect those existing amenities. Here's a summary slide saying the exact same thing. We've got lots of low-density residential land in Jonesville. What we don't have is recreational. Um, shifting gears away from your future land use element to your conservation element, uh, we think about conservation element as just promoting environmental resources and it absolutely does promote and protect environmental resources, but that's not all. You also have a focus in this part of your comprehensive plan on protecting human-focused resources. resources like recreation. So here are some of the values that we attach to human-focused conservation lands. The scenic quality, creating a unique sense of place in, in Alachua County. I really appreciate some of the comments that the agent for the applicant made in talking about how beautiful the property is, how beautiful the existing trees are on the property. It absolutely does contribute to that unique sense of place and what makes Alachua County special and beautiful. Another policy calling for using these conservation lands to create unique opportunities for recreation, not just about ecology, it's also about human places for recreation. Well then, what about the new park that the applicants discussed? We've heard a lot about the new park, and I want to, I want to talk a little bit about what's happening with that portion. If you were to transmit this and ultimately adopt it, what would be happening with that, that new park portion of the property? Well, first of all, as the applicants discussed, it can include stormwater. It also can include developed uses that are accessory to the residential development on the property. With the actual quote from their proposed language is "complementary structures and indoor uses such as indoor recreational facilities, clubhouses, and concessionaire facilities." In addition, it can include stormwater facilities. This is a map, I think the applicant showed this to you, just identifying those stormwater facilities and the community recreation and amenities area, something dedicated to the private use of folks who live in the, the newly-developed homes, not community-serving residential, or community-serving recreational lands. So I, I make that point that, to, to counter the idea that this is a little like Depot Park. If you took Depot Park and you stretched it out across a mile and a half and curved it up like a gerrymandered congressional district, that's a little bit what it would look like. Lastly, on the new park, and there's a, there was a little bit of a change. I, I pulled the language that I have here from your staff report and the applicant's submittal. Mr. Squager presented slightly different language, so I just want to make clear that there may have been a change since what, since I reviewed your backup. It appears as though there was. I'm referring to the language that's, that's in your backup that I was able to review. The call is for the, this quote "new park space to be improved by the developer and managed and maintained by an owners association," unless there's an allowance for you to accept it. I loved language like this when I sat on a dais like y'all do because it meant that I didn't have to pay for something, but it also means that the county has no ability to control the quality or the character of the improvements in that area, or the level of quality and character, the standard to which they're maintained. So, so these are big questions. We've got private amenities in this area, stormwater, and no standards for, to what level it would be improved or how it would be maintained. So before accepting this as a high-quality open space, these are big questions that would need to be answered. Okay. Next, I'm going to move on to this concept of protecting investment-backed expectations, and it looks like we're still doing pretty good on time. First, you know this recreation land use has value for neighbors. That's, that's clear. I'll talk a little bit about it more, but I think that's pretty self-evident. The recreation land use also has value for the property owner, West End Golf Club Inc. Mr. Brown talked a little bit about fairness, and I think that's an excellent point, and we should be considerate of the needs of a property owner. I'll talk a little bit about how a decision to not transmit this absolutely does that. So first, we know that the homes were developed and marketed in association with the recreation land use. I think your staff made that very clear. This is the most recent PD drawing, but it's consistent with the drawing showing the development associated with the golf course going all the way back to the 1980s. The most current data on this shows unequivocally, you can, you can look at it quantitatively, that having these kinds of recreation lands nearby increases property values. So this is what folks bought into with that expectation. Let's shift gears and spend a little bit of time talking about West End Golf Club Inc., because I do think this is a serious and legitimate issue. Your future land use element policy 10.1.1 identifies and describes what activities are allowed in your recreation, on land with a recreation future land use designation. And they give you lots of opportunity to use those land for productive purposes. You even itemize a list. It's not just golf courses. You can have tennis courts, ball courts, ball fields, snack bars, pro shops, clubhouses, country clubs. Development opportunities exist under your current comprehensive plan. You don't have to transmit to allow development activity that's consistent with a recreation future land use designation to happen on the property. We even have similar outdoor sports. I'll say it, pickleball. A lot of conversation about golf being dead. Y'all know this is not true. I, I, my, I went to my barber today to have my beard trimmed, and he's a big golfer. And I, I asked him if golf was dead. He was telling me he's been improving his game. And he said golf is more vibrant today than it has been in his entire life, and he's been golfing since he was in high school. These are just some Gainesville Sun headlines. Y'all know this better than I do. It's the Lee property proposal and the Meadowbrook Golf Course driving range. I just put these up here. They're out of date now, of course. You've, you've had hearings since then. Just to make the point, folks are coming to you asking for developments in a golf recreation space because there is demand for that kind of recreational opportunity for pay. It's, is absolutely not, the, the suggestion that there's not market interest in this kind of land use is not correct. Looking at a little bit of data on what golf courses transact for in the marketplace when they are sold, I pulled all the records from Ms. Solomon, our property appraiser. I found five transactions for golf courses in the community. The ones that are qualified are, are not, she's saying those are not market rate transactions. For some reason, they don't reflect actual value. The unqualified ones actually do. So when we see, when we have an actual market rate transaction for golf courses in the community in the last few decades, they sell for millions of dollars. Absolutely, value exists for recreation lands in Alachua County. Golf isn't dead, it's dynamic. I'll, I'll quote Sam Metro. That's my barber. He did say that today. I didn't prompt him. I just wanted to throw these, these, these logos up here to remind you that we have lots of recreation services that are provided by private organizations on a fee-for-service-based model or on a membership model in Alachua County. It's very, very typical, the idea that recreation is only a government service is, is not correct. Lots of private property owners operate recreational services, and they, they do it on, as a, on a commercial basis. Sometimes for profit, sometimes not for profit, but as a going concern, not as a subsidized government service. To make that point again, I, I just went into your comp plan and I pulled the ownership of all the properties with a recreation future land use designation. Some of them are owned by government, right? Some of your parks, public land, has a future land use designation as recreational, but that's not all. You've got 10 private property owners, including West End Golf Course, that own recreation land in Alachua County. It is not an anomaly for privately-owned land to have a future land use designation of recreation. I don't know why that's blank there. Well, my, my final slide was just to reiterate the point that I think Mr. Hornby made, and that is, we support the recommendation of your planning commission. We support the recreation, sorry, the recommendation of your staff. While we have different reasons for thinking that not transmitting the comprehensive plan amendment is the right decision, we absolutely think that it is the right decision. We're, we're unanimous with those recommending bodies to you. Thank you so much for your time and attention, and like the applicant, I know we'd be happy to answer questions, too.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Everyone, let's move on. Let's move on. More citizens comment, but just, Anna, did you have something you want to say now? Or this, no?
No, I wish that when I thought we were going to be asking questions.
I got you. Okay, thank you. Come right on in. Yes, we've got two different places where you can line up. All right.
I'm going to start. I'm Mary Lou Mansfield. I live at Tioga. I'm part of We Care. And what I was asked to talk about by the group was how the county cares. They care about recreation, and the examples are the letter that Mr. Hornby told you about, that we went to land conservation. I was there, and one of the main members looked at us and said, "Well, it just seems obvious to develop it." And once we described the area and described how much we cared, he was the first person to recommend having that letter sent to you. That was the first step, the county cares. They also care because they wanted a definition of what recreation is. And last summer, Mr. Castine and his group held a Zoom workshop for us and let us all discuss all over the county what recreation was, what we wanted to see in recreation, and why it was important. Okay, next, you are having a study done for the Recreation Department by both an engineering firm that we're familiar with and a private company, asking, "What do we want to see in recreation? Where do we want to see it? Where do you, do we live?" So the county cares. You've made that obvious to all of us. You care. And it's not that we don't care about development. We do. But we care about development and its place. This is already recreation. Does the owner care? Go drive by and see if he cares. Okay. As far as new park, and our developer will give the county a park, well, that wasn't the original suggestion. It was only when opposed by a lot of people that he started to care differently. So you're going to hear a lot of people tonight probably getting very emotional and sometimes not always total rational because they care so, so much. I think that all of us as a county can work together. We're not asking for the gentleman who owns it not to make a profit. He will. But we're asking you all not to transmit this because it will give him an opportunity to sell it as it is, recreation. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. All right, next speaker.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for your time. My name is Mark Dixon. I was employed at West End for over 20 years. Both by the previous owner and the current owner. There are two topics that I'm going to discuss. One, the state of golf, and the other is my personal experience of the profitability of the golf course. The applicant suggests these two factors, declining golf and limited options justify the requested changes to the land use and zoning of this property. I would like to start by saying that the Professional Golf Association reports that it is an $8.2 billion business in the state of Florida. There are 1,250 golf courses, public and private. The village is less than an hour away, has 12 championship courses and 38 executive, executive courses on property. Ocala has 30 golf courses, most of which are open to the public, open to public play. Gainesville currently has five, three in operation, and two of which are, are private. The National Golf Foundation reports that 37.5 million Americans ages six and older played golf in 2021, both on, on and off course. 25.1 million played on course and 12.4 million people played in such places as driving ranges, indoor simulators, and Topgolf or Drive Shack, just to go out and hit golf balls. There were more than 16,000 courses and 14,000, in 14,000 facilities in the United States in 2021. Golf increased in numbers of rounds played by 14% in 2020 during the pandemic, and again by 5% in 2021, a total of 19%, showing that the resurgence of the 2020 pandemic growth still continues. Most important, youth golf participation is up 25% in the past, in the past three years, a signal for a strong future in golf. West End has always supported the community of Gainesville by providing recreation and education in the game of golf. Most, if not all, area high schools have come to West End at one time or another to use the facility for golf team practice and match play. Most recently, while I was manager at West End, the Newberry, the Newberry High School used West End as their home course, competing in matches at all levels, local, regional, and state. Santa Fe College also used West End for many, many years as its primary community education golf facility. The Gator Junior Golf Association was formed at West End in 2016.
Can you, can you conclude?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right. No, you're doing good.
I'd really like to read this last paragraph, if that's okay.
If, if you could just give it. What is your name?
Thank you.
That's okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. The Gator Junior Golf Association was formed at West End in 2016 and obtained a 503 status in 2017. There are over 400 youth annually and 1,600 since the inception that have participated in the program. Organizations supported by the program include Girls Place, Reichert House, Shands Children's Hospital, Special Olympics, LPGA Girls Golf, and PGA Junior League. Thirty percent of those participants are on scholarship. This program is modeled after the first T program. Gator Junior Golf promotes core values of honesty, integrity, sportsmanship, respect, confidence, responsibility, and perseverance through the game of golf. So golf is not just about golf.
Thank you, sir.
During my many years at West End Golf Course, I witnessed many successes. Operating a golf course can be very challenging due to public demand for conditions to always be at their best. For over 20 years, I watched West End operate as a highly profitable business, highly profitable business. In more recent years, capital investment declined and deferred maintenance needs increased, resulting in poor course conditions and people not wanting to come use the facility. Eventually, the ownership, having lost, lost interest and seeing this as a potential development, continued divestment, even to the point of not having basics like range balls and mats for the facility that they own. Until the business closed and locked the doors. The golf course failed, not from lack of interest in golf, but from lack of interest on the part of the owners who preferred to sell for development. You are not required, as commission, to grant them that wish at the expense of the neighboring community. There are other paths forwards, forward for this property.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker. Thank you for your history on that, too. That, that was important information. All right, sir, tell me your name.
This is Jacob Bian. I live in Arbor Greens. I'm here to express my support for density in the neighborhood. I know a lot of my neighbors now hates me because of.
Not at all, no.
But I want to offer some perspectives why I'm, why I support development. First, this is a property that's our next, right next to the Newberry Avenue. It's a major corridor that connects with the town. It's a very convenient location. I can't think of another piece of land better than this one for new housing to be developed. And the reason we need new housing in this town is because the housing prices are going crazy. I'm not sure how much my neighbors pay for the property, but if they are, if, I, I think my children, my kids, or in a very long time, my grandchildren wants to live in the same town I live in, I think they won't be, be able to afford this because it is just too limited supply in, in this town. We, Florida is attracting visits, newcomers to live in our state every day. And if we push out development, we don't allow them to, to, new housing to be, to be developed in premium locations like this, they will go to more vulnerable locations, there will be hurricane and other flooding issues associated with those housing to be developed. So that's, that's my first main reason, affordability. Think about the firefighters, teachers, nurses who want to live close town but need, being pushed out of, to the more rural places. And the second reason is we need more transportation options than driving. Right now, I live in, in the neighborhood and I took, I, I have to drive to campus because there's no transit option, and it takes too much time for me to back to the place I work. So I recently bought a e-bike to allow me to do that. But the, the problem is, if we keep pushing the development out, there will be less and less opportunity for people like me who want to get, get rid of driving. And some, some of my neighbors at some point may not be able to drive. So having access to other modes, having able, being able to access to transit, paratransit, that's extremely valuable to a, a lot of us. So I would suggest that we neighbors think about these options when, when we think about, think about these broader issues when we think about this development. That's all I want. One last thing, I have ten more seconds. So Thomas showed a, a map showing if we want to go to recreational places, it takes more than an hour of walking. If we do the same analysis for the whole county, that's everywhere. Very few neighborhoods can get to places easily.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Hello, my name is David Cohen. I'm a homeowner in the Arbor Greens neighborhood. I would like to thank the, the chairwoman for the time to speak. I would like to, uh, thank the, the chairwoman for the time to speak today. I would like to recommend not to transmit, uh, support the staff recommendation. Okay. Where I live in Arbor Greens, uh, this subject property is the only recreational, uh, zoned space that I can walk to or bike to. It is impossible to walk or bike from this neighborhood to downtown Gainesville. I'm an avid biker. I love to bike, but it is so unsafe to ride a bicycle on Newbury Road or anyway to get east from this neighborhood. This neighborhood is probably the most expensive area in Alachua County. If the, the developer were to build these houses, these would not be affordable housing. 70, uh, houses, single-family houses would probably go between, probably around $750,000. That's not affordable. No firefighter, no police officer is going to be able to afford that. We are, we would be giving away our future, our children's right to recreational area. Our children have a right to recreational space. That is what I'm really pushing to non-transmit, not transmit. It makes no sense. Why are we giving away something so valuable as green space, recreational space for children to play, to be able to go from their house to a green space where they can ride a bicycle or walk or play with a ball? It's stupid to get rid of recreational space, the only place we can walk to.
Let him talk, please. It's his, his time. I'm sorry.
There, there's all kinds of, I, I've been watching some of the other, uh, hearings that you guys have had. They talk about they don't hear birds. At this place, you, you hear birds. You see foxes. You see deer. It's really crazy to not have this recreational area. Why would we lose our natural habitat? I'm a homeowner. I bought my property in this area because there's a recreational space. This board is responsible for making the law, planning law is the law. We all, as property owners, we made the economic sense based on the law to buy property where we did, based on planning code, and I am recommending keep the planning code as is and do not transmit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, there's more to come. All right, come right on.
Good evening. My name's Diana Mazares. I'm a 43-year resident of, um, Gainesville, coming up from Fort Lauderdale to go to UF, majoring in recreation and health sciences. And our motto back then, 43 years ago, was for recreation, life, be in it. Recreation is a huge part of everybody's life. It, it's a, helps develop children, camaraderie, sportsmanlike behavior, uh, physical, you name it, and it's evident. And Gainesville, I stayed here because of all of those things. So I certainly hate to lose that, especially since I learned how to play golf at West End 30 something years ago with Scott Dombeck. So what I'd like to say is, first, because I don't want to forget to say this, when I drive by Meadowbrook and West End, it makes me physically ill. West End has not had to keep up with codes enforcement. It doesn't, it's not the beautiful place it used to be. Meadowbrook never, doesn't look like a golf course. These two places were mainstays for Gainesville. We keep losing golf courses. We're going to continue to lose golfers, not because golf is not a hot sport, but because there's no place for kids to play. As a youth, I had an amazing recreational facility that I could have done cartwheels to, that's how close it was, and it had everything that they were talking about, basketball, um, tennis, uh, baseball, a community center. There was the library right there. My mom was a single mom, three kids. We stayed out of trouble because we were busy all of the time and we could walk there or ride our bikes. Like he said, riding bikes and, as a bike rider, although Gainesville has done an incredible job over the years, Newbury Road is not safe. Tower Road is not safe to get to, um, anywhere. Diamond Sports Park's not safe. The VA Park is not safe. Those aren't places kids can just mosey on over to participate in a sport. And another thing that's important is for parks like West End could be, is it could be a family, um, community activity area. A lot of this, like, like Depot Park, what an amazing, like I say, the west side should be keeping up with the east side. That is just an amazing park. People retired there and they did so for a reason, so they could recreate. 40 acres is a lot of water, not green space, like they said, and it's perimeter land. It's not like Depot Park. Parking in Tioga Center, when I go there for lunch or dinner, it is virtually impossible. I have to park somewhere way far away and walk. Traffic during work times, um, it's already horrific.
Quickly.
One, one last thing I'd like to say. So if any developer is allowed to develop, this is what I would like people, uh, planning councils to think about in the future. The bear, the current terror development on Newbury Road looks like barracks. The one on 39th Avenue looks like a matchbook community.
Are you finished?
I'm finished.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Very much. All right, next speaker. Let's keep it moving, you guys. There's a lot of folks who want to speak.
Paul McLaughlin, and I live in Villas North. I attended both of the two large meetings mandated by the county, each with an attendance of over 200 residents, held by JB Pro to inform residents living near the former West End Golf Course about potential development plans by the proposed buyer of the property. None of the attendees who commented at either of these meetings were in support of changing the zoning from recreational land use to low-density residential. None of the attendees who commented at either meeting were in support of the proposed development regardless of the number of homes, commercial property, hotel, or multifamily units. During the first of these meetings that was held by Zoom, which lasted four hours and maxed out the Zoom interface, representatives from JB Pro made comments like, now that you live here, you don't want anyone else to move here. Wrong. I myself have lived in Alachua County since 1991. Mr. McAtora stated, you all need to get over it. If I don't develop this property, somebody else will. Jay Brown stated, golf is dead. We already heard that tonight. At the second of these meetings in December of 2021, two of the public speakers proved that hypothesis wrong, totally wrong. I wonder how much else in these presentations by JB Pro representatives is flawed. JB Pro also held several small group meetings, attempting to have dialogue with residents living in the surrounding communities. At the meeting I attended, Mr. McAtora commented, I'm not in the recreation business. One of his associates said, development will occur and the community should just cooperate. It's also important to note, in an effort to increase dialogue with a developer, community members sent a list of 32 questions over a year ago regarding the park proposal for the developer to address. We never received answers to any of those 32 questions. Does that show a willingness for dialogue? No. On page 42 of the support data that has been submitted to the project, it states applicant has engaged in public outreach and has provided for public input. What's not stated is that all of the public input has been against both changing the zoning and the proposed development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. All right, next speaker.
Thank you. My name is Steve Provost. I live at 13164 Southwest 6th Avenue, about six blocks from the, uh, the park site, the golf course site. Uh, a few months ago, you guys, uh, gave a project to your planning department to come up with a master plan for parks and recreation services. Uh, I went, they held, or staff did, I think, two or three public hearings or public meetings, I guess, workshops, they were called. I went to two of those and I looked at the maps that they had and I talked to the staff. And it was pretty clear, looking at the maps and talking with staff, that the southwest area, particularly all the area west of I-75, particularly within the urban cluster boundary, really needed some more parks. There just weren't any, other than the three that Thomas mentioned, uh, the Jonesville Park, the Veterans Park, and Diamond Sports Park. And those are certainly very fine facilities. I've been to all three of those. They're very well-used, as you well know, but they're, you know, they are primarily, as been pointed out, they're drive-up facilities and they're sports-focused facilities. What we need in this area is a multi-use, uh, multi-generational facility where you can walk to it. And, uh, so I think that's what we're talking about here. And the West End Golf Course is an ideal location for such a facility. Why? It is within the urban cluster area in the fastest-growing corridor, probably the, the Newbury Road corridor. Its surrounding area is heavily developed, as been pointed out by both single-family and, uh, and, uh, apartment buildings, as well as the few other undeveloped areas adjacent to it. You saw the Xs. Those are already coming through you for approval as rec, as residential areas. So that's all happening right in the vicinity of the, uh, of West End Park. Therefore, there, with all those are developed, there are many families that are living within walking distance of the West End Park area. And I think maybe most significantly from, from your perspective, uh, as you have seen, this property has been designated as recreation land for over 50 years, and it is so identified in your 2030 comp plan. And given the needs for park and recreation facilities in the area, keeping the West End recreational land use eliminates the need for the county to try to provide, to try to find other undeveloped land in the area and, of course, go through the change in, in land use that you would have to do to, uh, develop it as a park area. So I think the west, uh, course, west end golf course property is truly ideally a location for a recreational facility. And I think it's said, I mean, we're not saying that the owner of that property is going to donate it to anything. I mean, that owner has the absolute right to sell the property. Uh, we're not entitled as a community to necessarily get a park, but neither, but he has the right to sell it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Provost. Next speaker.
Hi, uh, my name is David Spear. Been a part of West End since, well, since I had a full head of hair and it's 28 years now. And, uh, I'm here to pull the heartstrings. That's, that's, that's because that's what it means to me. It's, uh, been a fabric of my life since the day I first stepped on the property. All these people here, this is a testimony. Did you see the Mins here? I don't see the Mins here. I haven't seen them here once. Those are the, the, let's put a face to this. I watched the Mins intentionally kill that beloved golf course, intentionally, where customers, lifelong customers would come up and say, why are they doing this? Why are they doing this? We know why. We're standing here because of why. This has been the long-term plan for many years. This has been in the making, so let's, let's call it what it is. The golf is dead? What a bunch of nonsense. Let's get rid of that premise. The community, development is rampant. When my parents retired here in 95, to my dismay, being a Northeasterner, and then I came down and I saw why. USA, US World, uh, report ranked this the number one city in America to raise your children and to retire. Try finding it on the list now. And you know why? Because we're here at this kind of meeting. That's why. Because people have been allowed to run amok with no regard. I'm not trying to demonize people. Go make a buck. Let's make a buck. The Mins bought it as a recreational property. Go out there and you get, get the most you can for a recreational property. You don't get to destroy our community that's been built since 1968. I grabbed a coattail in 95. I'm a newbie, okay? This guy, this is like, uh, fresh off the plane. He's like a brother to me. My dear departed Jim White. So many people, you, you walk the course. Hey, Dave, here, have a beer. Let's talk. I mean, you can't put a price on that, although they're trying to. And I, once again, I'm not trying to attack the people involved. I'm trying to attack what's the process. At some point, Mr. Smith has come to Washington. Y'all are Mr. Smith. You've got the power to be Jimmy Stewart. And on behalf of all of us, I'm begging you, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Julie Ellis. I have lived in the Gainesville area now for about 28 years. I currently live in the town of Tioga. I play golf, I play pickleball, I play tennis, all of that, all of those things of interest. I actually have come to talk to you about something a little bit different, and that's about multi-generational mental health. I am a licensed psychologist here in town. I work with children and their families. And I wanted to bring to your attention some of the other reasons that we need to preserve this recreational space. There's been multitudes of studies that show that outdoor education, outdoor recreation, outdoor physical activity, and even visiting green, open outdoor spaces leads to better mental health in all the age brackets of our community. So exercising in outdoors, and there's thousands of studies on this, improves vitality and energy, decreases tension and stress, it decreases depression and anxiety symptoms, it decreases anger symptoms, and it increases self-esteem and mood. Every single member of our community is going to face mental health issues at some point in their life, whether it be stress, or depression, or grief, or anxiety. It will happen to all of us. I work specifically with children and their families, and as you may know, especially if you have kids and grandkids of your own, we are seeing far more anxiety in children, far more, um, obesity in children, far less social skills in children. They don't know how to navigate their social environment. They don't know how to solve social problems. They don't play like we used to. They're inside on devices. And one of the ways we can get these kids out and exercising and interacting with their families and with other children is to preserve these areas in our community, right? It's kind of a no-brainer, like the other guy said. It's really stupid to think of getting rid of this. I have lived in that area for 21 years in Tioga, and I have watched in recent years development after development after development after development go up around me. And I get it, cities grow and that's great. But 50 years ago, some people in your position saw fit to preserve this area for us, for future generations, for the community, and for their benefit. And what's happening here is the community has something that somebody else wants to make a profit from, and they're going to sell it to us or carved up in some piece and packet that they say will benefit us in the long run. I don't believe that to be true. We pride ourselves here in Gainesville in being a city that can exercise outdoors all year long. We talk about our environment in Alachua County and how we're going to protect the wetlands and the environment that we have here and value so much, the lifestyle of fitness and outdoor activity. And here we are talking about getting rid of some of that that would be so easy to preserve that 50 years ago commissioners saw fit to preserve.
Thank you.
So please consider that, and I thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker, please.
Thank you for having us. Thanks for taking the time. Very much appreciated. My name's George Fox. I live in Arbor Greens there. Um, we moved to Gainesville, uh, from the Keys in 2002 when we found out our son, Phoenix, was born with a rare type of muscular dystrophy. And it just so happened, there's a clinical trial going on at University of Florida to treat his muscular dystrophy. And so, uh, we, we left there and we brought our business and our life and we brought everything here. And after moving around the area a couple of times, we ended up in the Tioga Town Center there across the street from West End. Because of the success of the business, we were able to build our first house ever. And, uh, in this one, we wanted to make it accessible because our son is on a wheelchair and also on a ventilator, so we wanted to build a house to accommodate him. It's the first time we could ever do that because of the success of the business we had there in the area. But I was also able to get a special chair for him, uh, that fits in a golf cart. It's like a handicap disabled chair you could put in a golf cart. Um, and, uh, and going out on golf cart rides quickly became his favorite thing to do. Uh, one of the biggest reasons we chose to build in Arbor Greens was because West End Golf Course and the fact I had a great place to take my son out, to get him out in nature and not be stuck in the house all the time. But since the course is closed, we haven't been able to get outside much at all, uh, even though he's still asked to go all the, all the time. While I fully embrace the concept of diversified housing and the development, in fact, the area around Jonesville is probably some of the most diverse in Alachua County, and there's plenty of mixed housing set to be built in the very. there's plenty of mixed housing set to be built in the very near future as well. The only problem with this area, as all of the, as all of the dwellings come online, is the disappearance of green, recreational, accessible space. It makes the natural area that is currently West End highly coveted, as it is, as an outdoor recreational space. That's why it's coveted. And very much needed, especially with all of the dogs and kids that have come to the area. If this space is rezoned and built with housing, I'm not sure I can keep my family here as the trend in development is not good at all for the well-being of the great people who live in this area. Putting this many houses into such a small area with no recreational space is just simply a place we cannot live. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Charles Guy, and I am Emeritus Professor of the Department of Environmental Horticulture at UF, and I'm a biochemist, plant physiologist. I live in nearby Arbor Greens neighborhood, and it's a two-minute walk to the former West End Golf Club property. I'm here to recommend to the Commission to not transmit the requested amendment to the Alachua County Comprehensive Plan and with respect to the West End Golf Properties. I recommend a no vote for the following reasons. A generational opportunity has arisen through just natural things happening that awaits to be embraced and acted upon by this Commission. The Commission is aware of the West Newberry Road Corridor, west of I-75 to Jonesville, and really beyond, all the way to Newberry, as there are approximately 4,000 new single-family and multifamily residential units recently built, under construction, or on, on the drawing board. The West End property is beautifully positioned in the center of a burgeoning, densely urban population that will need access to public, multi-use, outdoor recreational space, the space so vital for community health and well-being, as the two previous speakers so elegantly put. The opportunity at hand is that the West End property is already zoned for recreational. If rezoned to residential, where else in the Jonesville area could the county find an equivalent land already zoned recreational for a highly accessible, highly utilized green space and nature park that would surely bolster the people's health and well-being, as we've just heard? Green space and recreational facilities are like a health department without walls. The Commission can't pass this opportunity up. Please don't let it slip away. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jen Garrett. I live in town of Tioga. My parents, Casey and Diana Scott, live across the street in Arbor Greens, actually next to George that spoke. They couldn't make it here tonight, but I guess let me start off by saying that I apologize for being about an hour late. Hopefully I have a little bit more.
No, you're good. Oh, you too.
So I apologize for being about an hour late. I was driving my kids all over this county for their after-school sports activities, and that's what I do every day. Living on the western side of the county, we have a huge lack of recreation spaces there. Yes, there are the parks that have been mentioned, and we use those. Believe me, I have spent so much time at that Jonesville Park for tennis and for soccer. And if you've seen the parking, it's a zoo over there. Everyone is, it's packed. It is very well-used. And I've seen those sweet senior ladies, they will drag that temporary pickleball net onto the basketball court. And I've, we need, we need pickleball out there on the western side. Anyway, what has really been difficult is when my son ran track and he needed to go to the only public track in town, assuming wherever that is, that's Cone Park. Getting from the western side of the county to Cone Park after school, it's, it's the worst idea. It's horrible. It's a 45-minute drive each way. The same thing is true if you're a child growing up in Newberry and you want to learn how to swim, you want to be on a swim team. Good luck getting to West Side Park after school, or any time in the afternoon during the week. It's wild. And that's kind of the problem that we're having out there is just, we don't have enough recreation spaces as it is, and I hate to lose this land use. Not, it's not just a zoning issue, as you know. It's a land use issue, and part of the planning. And really successful cities that have very dense residential areas only work when we have those relief spaces through recreation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Welcome. How nice to see you here tonight.
Well, I'm not an urban planner, but I did spend six years on the North Reg-
North Florida Regional Planning-
North Florida Regional Planning Council, and six years on the MTPO. And 33 years doing real estate. And M.M. Parrish said, "Any house you list on a golf course, add 5%." And we still do it. So that young man in Arbor Green, who is in favor of the project, his house will go down 5% if anything happens to that Green. You know, the thing that I can't understand is, you know, I was the city commissioner for years and years and years, and we talked about density, 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 buildup in the city. That's where these kind of developments should go. You guys should be preserving the recreational land, the green space. The psychologists that talked, walking under trees is really very, very healthy for your brain. Newberry Road can't handle any more traffic. I don't care if this sales tax passes or not. You're looking at six years if you're going to be working with Florida DOT and the County Commission to do anything about Newberry Road. And I just don't think we can go back to that. I lived through the period where I could get to Palatka faster than I could get to Jonesville. Green space is badly needed. The town of Tioga is really very dense, and it's, it's got enough multifamily zoning. We've got enough. Newberry is going to put in a huge development very soon. So none of this is really making sense. You know, got to look at the environment, too. We've got karst topography. That part of the county is really scary. It's not like the east side with all of that clay. You've got direct passages into the aquifer. And so I think you've got to be really careful about preserving green space and not allowing high density when you're dealing with karst topography. And that's my song and dance tonight, and I thank you very much for what you're doing. Heroes.
For those of you who don't know, this is Jean Chalmers.
Former mayor.
Hi. My name is Patty Gennarelli. I appreciate y'all's time. I wasn't trying to mislead you by not standing up, but I've been fighting vertigo all day, so just kind of bear with me.
You need to sit? We can bring you?
No, no.
Okay.
This was, as long, it's positional, so.
Okay, I understand.
But I, this was important to be here.
Thank you.
And I appreciate y'all's time. Prior to moving here five years ago, I owned and operated in Property and Casualty Insurance Agency in Cocoa, Florida for 26 years. That's kind of the lens I see the world, through the world. And that's why I'm glad we don't live here, so we don't live on the coast and have to evacuate anymore. But what I wanted to do was share my concerns about the hazards that this apparently abandoned property represents in terms of fire hazards and risk to human life. Most of y'all-
Can we get an overhead, please?
Oops.
All right, well, it's coming.
I haven't used an overhead in a long time.
That's all right. Those folks have. There you, there you go.
So this is an active, ongoing business. A lot of y'all recognize this. This is what we used to have. And when I drive by here, what I see, and I've circled there in blue, are dead palm fronds. I see newspapers. I see all kinds of fire hazards, and that scares me. I also see cars for sale there. I didn't get a picture of that, I'm sorry. It's an attractive nuisance. This is the backside of the building. You can tell it's been used by transients, kids. The good thing is, so far, nobody's burned up themselves or this. This picture was taken, by the way, the last picture I took yesterday. This picture was taken by Ryan, and I may not pronounce his last name correctly, Cannelli. He's in the Alachua County Environmental Protection Department. He did an inspection of this property a while ago. I'm kind of new into this group. This is his photograph, so you can see the lack of maintenance there. You can see the unsecured building. To me, I don't know how many of you have kids, but this is calling to kids, "Hey, come play here." What is in that shed? Like this. You can see barrels of chemicals and oils that are unsecured, possibly leaking. Where I drew that arrow, you can tell it's, there's no, it hasn't rained because there isn't water on top of the drums, but there's liquid there, and we don't know what it is. Is that a threat to the environment? Is that a risk? Because golf courses do use chemicals. I don't know. This hasn't been secured. The next fun photo is a sinkhole. This sinkhole developed between 2014 or 15 behind Building D and the Greens. It's on both the Greens and the Golf Course property. You can see how close it is to the homes. I won't show you the dead tree pictures, but sinkholes, dead trees, unattended cars, unsecured buildings, and chemicals is representative of the amount of disrepair in this property. This and other abandoned properties require maintenance because the infrastructure is, A, an attractive nuisance. These photos expose current code insufficiencies. There's been hundreds of calls for complaints on this with one violation. You need to send a clear signal to the owner that this needs to be maintained.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. All right, next speaker. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Amy Elliott, and I just want to apologize. I've never done this before, so I apologize at the forefront for any stumbling through-
You're doing just fine. I can tell.
So I have a PhD in epidemiology from the University of Florida, and I'd like to talk about two things tonight. One is drugs, and the other is craftsmanship. Very different things. So my PhD is actually in drug use epidemiology, so I am a bit of an expert in the area. But I'd like to talk about the effect of green space on drug use. So we know it's, obviously has a very positive effect on physical health and also mental health, but what about drug use? Right? So a thorough search of the literature shows that the effect of green space on drug use outcomes has not been studied as thoroughly, unfortunately, as these other outcomes. But evidence among adolescent populations is mixed. So in a longitudinal study, there were findings that access to green space led to better outcomes for tobacco use and binge drinking among adolescents, but no change in overall alcohol use and actually worse outcomes for marijuana use. Among adult populations, there's a strong evidence supporting the use of green space and recovery, with findings showing that even passively seeing green space from your home even, not even being out in it, helps reduce the, the frequency and intensity of alcohol, tobacco, and also food cravings. Research also shows that the, those living near green space, it's linked with lower rates of smoking and higher chances of quitting smoking. So that's the first part. The second part is craftsmanship. So we've heard today that these homes are, they have to be nice, right? Because they're going to be big. And I just want to speak basically on the, the builds that already exist from this developer. So unfortunately, I live in what is not so fondly known as the barracks, which is the front part of the development. And I'd like to talk about my issues. So basically, just a few things to go through. The craftsmanship is absolutely abysmal. My floors are crunchy. My upstairs floors are crunchy, not just squeaky, they're crunchy. I've pulled up the carpet and found that several of the screws are overscrewed into the board by half an inch to an inch. I have walls that aren't straight. I have walls that are too long. I have windows that are leaking and have damaged walls because the windows are leaking. Anyway, that's just a bit of, of what I'm dealing with. But, and maybe you'll say, "Who's responsibility of that is that? It's not his." Maybe it's the responsibility of the HOA president. Guess who the HOA president is? His daughter.
Thank you very much. Okay, okay. Excuse me, next speaker, next speaker. Thank you. Excuse me. Politeness here, you all.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Anthony Johnson.
Mr. Johnson.
Madam Chair, you've heard me speak about the urban cluster on many occasions, and so have a lot of the people in the house tonight. So I want to state that I'm not here to pander in for votes. I'm speaking from the heart when I tell you, when I talk to you tonight about what I feel about this, this issue. The urban cluster was designed in long-term planning to be a place for a blue light special, basically, for developers. And that's what it is. It was set up that way, and it continues to operate that way. If you are a developer, you can build in the urban cluster at a discount rate. We've talked about this many times. And I'm not in favor of that now. I was, I was for it when it happened. It came about after the Great Recession. There was a need for that type of arrangement. But no, not now. I mean, the level of development that's taken place in the urban cluster now, there's no reason to be giving discounts to developers. But when we have a developer-friendly board of county commissioners, then this going, that's going to continue. And we do have that, a developer-friendly board. And we have, what we have tonight here is a train wreck, basically. You got the board, developer-friendly board, who had, who's complying with the comp plan, okay, wants to comply with the comp plan, and we have an applicant here that wants, that's bending over backward to comply with the comp plan. I kind of feel for the applicant, believe it or not. He's trying everything, but the community, the people. I've told you on many occasions, you can't put the comp plan above people. The wishes of the people will take precedence over the comp plan. So therefore, we need to do a deep dive into the comp plan now. The situation in West Gainesville, the urban cluster, has changed from 2008. You could go build a development there and be miles from the next development. But now things have been built so, so, so become so dense, until you need a shoehorn now to get these new developments in. And, and so you, people are going to complain about that. I don't want to be urban, that type of urban. Moved out there to be suburban. So, but the comp plan says, pack them in, high density, and they're going to all live, work, and play, and there's going to be no cause. But we know that's not true, Madam Chair. So I'm saying that we need to do the deep dive, see the board that's not as biased towards, for developers as we have now. And we got to stop having these kind of meetings because they're getting larger and larger, the more, more and more people are coming out because they're being impacted by the decisions of the board. And it's all been driven by you trying to favor the comp plan over anything else.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Now you get your turn.
Hello. In addition to the, my neighbor, give me a second, I'm sorry.
You're doing fine. Tell us your name.
My name is Adrian.
Adrian.
I also live in Tara, and it's in regards to the design and the quality and that aspect. In addition, everything else, because everything else is very valid, but I would like to also confirm it's not just an isolated incident. The developer is, the things they've done wrong, they've intentionally put in coax cables, knowing they didn't even need them, that it was all for, what is it, the, the, there's so many different things. They flooded our house, a brand-new house that we just bought. The toilets exploded, all three. They jetted the lines. And toilets, like flooding poop-smelling toilets, water we just bought. Do you know how traumatizing that was? I had to use our own towels to soak up the shit. And I say that literally, okay? I went out there crying. There's so many times they've had water exploding. I have videos of hours of them just letting the water. Do you guys not care about the water, the trees enforcement? There's oil. I mean, they're not locking it up. Do you guys, what are you guys doing? I mean, the Lorax speaks for the trees, and we're here to speak for our community, so do something about it, please. Because it's a safety and health issue, and we actually care. Mental health is important, and I struggle with it deeply. And that green space, that's one of the reasons we moved there, because I struggle and I need that out. because I struggle and I need that out. And I don't, I don't really like to do it, but I know that's there, and it influences it. And if you guys don't do something about this and keep it safe for all of us and the community, there's going to be nothing left, and you guys are responsible.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker. How are you, sir?
Hello. My name is Travis Oakman. I live in Villas of Weston, and I just want to go on record saying that I do not agree with the development. I want to keep the recreational zoning the way it is, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Good evening.
And I want to speak for the children of the future. I think that sometimes...
Yeah, put your microphone so we can hear you just a little bit better. Thank you. Thank you.
I think this is a chance to preserve a legacy to hand down to future generations. When you have this valuable recreation green space, you want to make sure that future generations have the privilege of being able to walk and ride their bicycles and play golf, and that it's accessible to everyone, and that it is so beneficial. We've heard from so many people tonight about the benefits of green recreational golf and other activities. It's just really, really important. The, Mr. Hoder was a visionary, and I know that every commissioner on our current county commission board, all of you are visionaries, and I know that you'll do the right thing.
Thank, tell me your name again, please.
Oh, Derringer, thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Barbara Goad, and I live in the Villas of Weston. And I think that it's very important, you know, that we keep it green because, you know, we have foxes, and we have fawns, and we have all kinds of wildlife that live there that are going to be right in the middle of their, where they're building, you know? And another thing is that, you know, I struggle sometimes with depression and what have you, and I enjoy the walk around there because I can get some fresh air and what have you. And, and you know, to be looking into the backside of somebody's, you know, townhouse is just going to be horrible. And so I would hope that y'all would really think about what you're doing because everybody, you know, you know, this is your chance to shine because out there, we need this so bad out there, and we are far away from everything. And it took me like 30 minutes to get here, oh, which, by the way, I got here at 2:00 after 5:00, and all the doors were locked. I know that we had a good showing in this room. I don't know about the other room, but myself and another gentleman in here, we walked and tried all the doors, all the way around. They were all locked. And so one guy was coming out of the employee, and said, hold the door, hold the door. And this, and this people that had already asked for help, they said he can't, he's an employee. Well, he walked, you know, the remainder of the 360 around the whole building, and he had to have somebody else let us in. And so I don't know who all was turned away tonight, but you know, that, that really irritated me. But anyway, but I, I want to go on record that I'm totally against this, and, you know, and there's a lot of people that are against. I'm surprised there weren't more people here tonight, but maybe they're in that other room or something. I don't know. But, you know, I don't know if that happened anywhere.
Well, thank you for the information. No, no, thank you. That's important to know. All right, next speaker.
My name is Karen Peoples. I live in patio homes of Weston, and my granddaughter is a grad student at UF and has just taken up golf. And she is mentoring a middle school student who is learning to play golf. And he wants me to call him when the meeting is over to find out what the county commissioners are doing about Weston Golf Course. That's how important it is to the kids in our neighborhood. Just thought you'd like to know that Nick's looking at what you're going to do tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Anyone else? This is your tans. I don't know. No, 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 just one time. Good try, good try. No, do you know if there's anyone in Grace Night?
There was. I've seen several of them in here. They've all come in and...
Oh, okay, everyone who's come in from Grace Night who wanted to speak. All right, come right on.
My name is Susannah.
Did you, you yield your time?
Okay.
Only a minute, only a minute.
You left only a minute, it was? You sure?
Hi, I'm Linda Stiles. I did not give up my time. On the traffic study, it looked like it said 2020 that was presented by the applicant, and I think a lot has changed since 2020. There's a lot of development that's happened since then. That was during COVID. There were fewer people on the road. A lot of people were working remotely. So I'm not really sure that traffic study is representative of what's really going on.
We'll ask. Thank you. Anyone else before we discuss some of your concerns and ask questions? All right. Are you sure? Going once? Twice? All right, commissioners, you've got questions? All right. Commissioner Pritzia, you ready to go first?
Sure, why not?
No, you just are, inquiring minds want to know.
Um, okay, I think...
Um, my questions primarily are probably for our staff, and some of them are based on the applicant's presentation, so they can perhaps chime in if they want. I guess my first question is, what, what is the definition of a planned development?
Madam Chair, Jerry Bruington, Senior Planner. A planned development, Madam Chair, is a zoning district defined in our code. A planned development is a unique zoning district that does not have any parameters associated with it, and so usually they are, they are one-offs, if you will. And so when somebody asks for a planned development, they are doing that because they want to develop their own set of criteria. That can be anything from building heights to permitted uses, to setbacks, but they are a unique zoning district that can be applied for to implement a variety of land uses as found in our comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you. So when I read the American Planning Association's definitions, and I look at sort of the planned development definitions that are out there in the planning world and in sort of popular press around this idea of like, what is planned development? Like, when I looked that up, it says, "A regulatory process which promotes holistic real estate development by segmenting potential development in land use and dwelling types." And I, I guess when I look at our policy, that 1.1.5 that's referenced in, hold on, I got to pull it up because, anyway, it talks about master planning and the, the goal of like, we want to see people master planning and thinking holistically about their development. And so I would imagine that the reason we would give somebody the opportunity to make up their own rules, as you say, to sort of develop under a planned development, you know, sort of bubble as opposed to just following our typical rules, is because we want to see a more master-planned process, a more holistic development that thinks about all of the things that somebody might need to live, work, play, move. Is that an accurate statement?
Madam Chair, planned developments actually have a long history in Alachua County. A lot of it used to, the older planned developments had to do actually more so with concurrency. We would have trip reservations based on concurrency which would come about through phasing of planned developments because a planned development can have phase one, phase two. They were usually up to 10 years. And so in Alachua County, we don't do so many. If you've noticed, the, the board has not seen a lot of planned developments in the past few years. We've gotten away from it. We've gone to a more code-based type of development with TODs, TNDs, cottage neighborhoods, whichever part of the code you want to pull from. We've been trying to do everything more code-based. And so planned developments, when they were originally done, a lot of times were done strictly because somebody wanted concurrency reservation for transportation. We don't do that anymore. You are absolutely correct, Commissioner Pritzia. They are supposed to be for innovative design. They don't always turn out that way. Sometimes they are more of a, a tool to implement when the code is not sufficient to address the needs maybe of somebody who wants to develop a piece of property. In theory, though, I would agree that, yes, they are supposed to be innovative. Many of them are. We've had a number of them that have been very successful in that regard. Sometimes not so much. It's been a mixed bag.
Okay, thank you. I guess I just, you know, one of the statements by the applicant was that we should be doing infill with this development, that, that that's what our, our comprehensive plan promotes. But I guess when I look at the development, besides the drastic need for recreational use and the inconsistency with our comp plan that the staff laid out, it also seems to me that this was developed under a planned development. And in a planned development, there's a set of goals and a set of uses that are set forward in that planned development, and there's an expectation by the people who buy into that planned development as well as us, as, as the county who approve that planned development, that the uses in that planned development maintain so that the concept of that comprehensive and holistic plan continues to move forward into the future.
Madam Chair, other planners can speak to this. This is my, planned developments, yes, that is correct, but they can be amended over time. Things change over time. Development patterns change over time. They are not a, from my viewpoint as a planner, they are not a snapshot in time that must be maintained at all costs. They can, planned developments and, and any type of development is, over time, can change. Now, obviously, there are expectations when people go and they see a, in this case, a recreational land use as to what that will be. And certainly, that is the board's prerogative as to maintaining that because we're talking ultimately about a land use decision now. We're not talking about a zoning. We're not talking about a PD. Tonight, we're talking about a land use decision. So the big picture is, is this recreation land use going to remain as it is? And that's really what we're kind of coming at, at this point. The PD is the nuts and bolts of how the land's getting developed. It's the implementing zoning district. We're talking recreational land use and whether that should stay as part of this or not.
Right. And I guess I, my point in all of that questioning is sort of that the land use as recreation was put as recreation because it was a golf course, but it, it also contains a lot of the stormwater for the surrounding areas, and that's part of sort of identifying a way to create a land use that encapsulates the uses of that land that facilitate the PD actually implementing. It's, I was sort of, it's sort of like a, you know, it's like a chicken and egg sort of...
It is. It's a balancing act, and Madam Chair, the, it, yes, it, it does do that, and the recreational, that is a, that's the question that the board's going to consider tonight, is whether they wish to do that. Certainly, there are many ways of interpreting policies. The applicant has given policies within the plan that they're interpreting a certain way. Staff has a very strong take on the way we interpret other goals, objectives, and policies in the plan for our recommendation as well. And there is, it's not a clean document in the comp plan where it's all very obvious. There's ways of interpreting various policies, goals, and objectives. And again, staff's presentation was regarding the ones that we thought were most seminal to this particular, which is that we would want something other than what's being proposed.
Okay. And with the stormwater question, is it typical, I know that, and it happens occasionally, right? It's not what we want, but that another development would address the stormwater issues of existing development?
I'm going to defer for this one. Madam Chair, it's not completely atypical to have a development, especially in phases that may have stormwater from different phases of a development that would have drainage rights on another portion of the property. So what you see here, where you do have some, some existing basins that are on the golf course property that have drainage easement rights from the developed properties, is not completely unheard of.
Unheard of. Okay, great. Thank you. Again, I, when I looked at our, I guess when I look at our policy, I also noticed that we, we consistently talk about that, that PD concept as a unified development plan. So when we, when we're looking at land uses, how do land uses get assigned within the, within a PD? Like, do they, do they come, if they come after, right?
Typically, Madam Chair, what you see is we are adopting, for most of the PDs that we have in the county, we've adopted the PD zoning over land uses that we had in our adopted comprehensive plan. So in this case, and I don't know, Jerry, if we have the original date of, of the first PD ordinance. Yeah, 1981 was the original planned development here. So in this case, it predated our, our first comprehensive plan, so the land uses were put on after the fact of, of the planned development.
Okay. Interesting. Okay, one of the, the statements by the applicant was that there was a, no reasonable economic beneficial use remains to the property. But in looking at our, our comprehensive plan, that land use has several other uses besides golf? Assuming that their argument that golf is dead is accurate? Is that true? What are the, I, I saw the list in Mr. Hawkins' presentation, but I wonder if that was a comprehensive list of the uses available to people in recreation land use?
That's correct. We, and as you know, we recently adopted recreation future land use policies, and then those are implemented through our code and through our zoning table. And those are the types of uses that would be available in any recreation land use. And, and the list that Mr. Hawkins showed was pretty exemplary. There's probably some others out there that would, that staff would find consistent with the recreation future land use, but those were certainly in the ballpark.
Okay. This may be a question for the applicant, but, but it might also be a question for staff, so stay tuned. You all mentioned the trips for the residential development, 727 daily trips. The existing golf course was 908 trips. You're proposing a park that would be the third-largest in the county. I'm assuming that there would be a massive amount of trips to a, a large park. I mean, Depot Park is so crowded on the weekends that you can't find a parking spot. So wouldn't the trips to that park also have to be included in this conceptual plan in terms of a transportation study?
I'll let Mr. Dawson speak to that since he's here.
Madam Chair, Chris Austin, Transportation Planning Manager. I would say we didn't really analyze the application for that. I'm, I'm just, I'm being upfront. I think if we got to the development stage, yes, you'd, you'd probably, you know, that's one of those like, who owns it? The county owns it? It's a park? Well, we got to have a park, so would we just, you know? I, I think that's one of the things the commission needs to weigh. Yeah, there would be trips associated with, with any kind of regional park, whether it's Jonesville Park, or a Veterans Park, or a Depot. Big parks have lots of people. A lot of times, those trips are off-peak hours. You know, we don't necessarily see people at parks at the same time that people are at the office. There's, there's some overlap, but, but yeah, there, there would have to be some sort of mitigation, some parking somewhere.
I guess I'm just wondering if the, if the statement that this would actually reduce trips is an accurate statement? I mean, it just seems to be part of the argument here for not following.
Yeah, so, Madam Chair, I guess, you know, that's one of the things, I guess, the commission kind of needs to think about is what the proposal actually is tonight. So, you know, we've heard a couple of things, and, and sort of one of the major focuses, two of the major focuses have been on the development side. That is this subdivision that would be developed, and then the other is the park. And there's a lot less certainty, I think, about the park part because it's just recreation. There's no proposal for exactly what would go in there. There's no playgrounds. There's, I mean, there's such a broad range of what could be in a park, so there's not really a proposal there for that. For the residential portion, they have some policies that are pretty explicit about what, what could be sort of the maximum development in there. I, I would just point out that, you know, that the applicant has provided one trip generation. Staff provided a, a different trip generation. I think that was in the staff report. We, we don't necessarily agree with their trip generation. We think it would be lower. The 70 homes is still underneath that. I, I think that at that level, you know, a park is probably similar to a golf course in terms of, of trip generation, so, guesstimate. That's off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you. I'll conclude for now.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Cornell, and then Commissioner Eagle Glenn.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. It's 8:00, but I'm going to be a minute, if that's okay? Is that okay? Because I got some questions. Let me start with the applicant, then I'll start with staff, then I'll go to the public, then I'll come back and give you some of my thoughts. I might even put a motion on the floor then. So to the applicant, I guess, Jay, you're as good as anyone here. So, so we received these 32 questions, I believe. One of the individuals referred to it, and so since you're here, I'm going to ask a couple of them, if that's okay? And if you can answer them, great. If you can't, just say I can't answer them. There's only 32. I'm only going to ask you three or four of them, but I think they're important to understand kind of the thinking of the applicant. So the second question on that list was, "Who will be responsible for revamping, reconditioning either the golf course or the park? What criteria or standards will be established that must be followed? A recent site visit and review by the golf course architecture..." that must be followed? A recent site visit and review by the golf course architecture builder estimated close to $1 million is needed to get the nine holes into playing condition, new green, tee box construction, et cetera. And so, I added to that question, what would be the commitment to either turn it back to a golf course or a multi-path improvements? I know you mentioned something, but what is the applicant committing to do in addition to dedicating that land to the county as part of the land development changes tonight?
Madam Chair, in response to that, so, our general plan for the park lands that we propose to donate to the county is to piece together the trails, make sure that we have a continuous system throughout all the open spaces. We also talked about that central green. We would also connect the trails on the sides and the back so that we could have a continuous trail going throughout the whole development. So, if we were looking at that land in the absence of donating it to the county, for example, then the plan would have been to have a passive park with, you know, maybe a playground, a dog park, trails going through there. It would be a kind of a low-key park because it would be, you know, more for the surrounding area. We would only have 70 units, for example, and there's, you know, 100 surrounding. But, and I think it was said, and it was said kind of in jest, I think, but, you know, Mr. Mctara had mentioned that he's not a golf course designer, that he's not in the golf course business. And that's just true. I mean, he is a developer of single-family residential neighborhoods. So, we would develop open space and amenities that would be commensurate with the development there. So, that's where the genesis of the idea was to donate it to the park, to donate it to the county because the county has a complete recreational staff, and they would have the opportunity to get with the community and decide what really are the needs. What can we put in this area? They have a process of doing that. They obviously maintain and have developed other parks as well. We're currently working with the county staff on some park improvements for a couple of parks that the county maintains. And so, I think the county staff would be the ones that would work with the community and try to determine what does the community need. Again, you know, 37 acres of land, there's a lot of things that can be done there. We listed in our presentation and in our application, you know, some of those things, like I mentioned, playgrounds, dog parks, aquatic center, fitness trails. There's all kinds of things. And frankly, what Paul Hornby, I think is his last name, what he showed, you know, different kinds of uses that are needed out there. I mean, those are the type of things that would have to be programmed. So, you know, Mr. Mctara is also not a park builder either. So, that's part of the idea of making sure that it goes to the county so that you all have the opportunity to put what the community needs in that park land.
Okay, we pull up your slide 29, because I think this is really what I'm drilling down on and trying to understand what Mr. Mctara and the applicant are trying to commit to as part of this, what I'm viewing as, what they're viewing as a negotiation. And... Right there. So, are you saying that Mr. Mctara is proposing that he would dedicate the land, the 38, seven acres, and build those trails up to the county standards, and that open space that remains in the development would be available to the public, and build the connection points for all of the red circles?
Yes.
That's what they're committing to?
We proposed to develop the full multi-use trail system throughout the open area, make the connections to the neighboring property, and then also provide that, dedicate that to the county, whereas the county could then program that land for other uses. But we felt that, under current conditions, people in the community and the neighborhoods are using those trails, or they certainly used them before while the golf course was active, and we wanted to restore that. It's just natural that there's already certain trail paths that go wind through the trees, work through that open space. So, we felt it was something that would just... Was crying out for a need in that open space.
Okay. Question 28, and then I've added to it, is, do the proposed retention ponds provide sinkhole mitigation for the existing properties? And then what I added was, and why would the county-owned park serve as a stormwater retention basis for the private development?
Well, that would obviously have to be worked out. The first part of your question as it relates to sinkhole mitigation, I mean, there are standards. When this development was done, we would have to design all the stormwater facilities to serve the development portion.
Would that stay on the developed land?
Some of it would, but some of it naturally goes to the open space area, like it does now. For instance, this stormwater area here is existing, and this stormwater area here is existing. And due to the topography and the lay of the lands, you know, that area that goes there naturally would still be able to go there. We would augment that with stormwater in these locations and then here. And those are kind of due to the fact that the low spots are where they are. And so, these can't, you know, take quite as much because the ones in the middle here, because there's just not as much drainage area that would be able to go to them. So, you have to take the water to where it goes. But when we do that, we would go through the process of reviewing them with Public Works Department, Environmental Protection, and address any sinkhole issues and that sort of thing.
So, obviously, the public is... They want recreation. We all want recreation. Our comp plan calls for recreation. A park is being proposed, but what we're actually talking about is transferring stormwater basins. So, how many acres of those two existing stormwater basins make up the 37?
Okay. I think I mentioned that earlier, but I have that data. Give me just one second to make sure.
Yeah, I remember a 30% number. Is it 30?
Yeah. Yeah. I'm sorry. Give me just a second.
Okay.
Okay. So, what we have is, it's 37.18 acres is the park area. Of that, including the area that we show on this map in particular. And granted, they're not designed. So, we haven't gotten to that stage yet, but it's pretty close. And we... There would be 8.8 acres of that 37.18 acres. And that's, I think I mentioned that previously, is about 23% of the park land of that 37 acres would be stormwater.
29 acres of land and nine acres.
Eight acres, about eight or nine acres, plus or minus. And then that's about 23% of that 37.18 acres. And that's actually pretty consistent with, you know, even if you're doing a park, you have to put stormwater for the park. So, I mean, stormwater takes up anywhere from, you know, 15% to 20% of property. And we already have drainage easements on a lot of this park land. So, there already is stormwater on this. So, much of that is existing.
No, my dear. No, my dear. It's okay. We're taking care of it here.
I mean, there are permitted stormwater basins that are permitted, that have drainage easements over them, that exist on the golf course, on this land. So, two of those three that we show there are existing.
Okay. Question 30... Okay, I think you've answered it. Yeah. Question 31, will you ensure measures to be taken to protect the endangered fern that was identified in your initial application? And then I added, is this... Because I heard one of the public say, is this fern actually located where we're currently proposing stormwater basins?
Yeah, we would not be able to do any activity around that. So, we wouldn't propose anything. And see what you see there, like, for instance, this area right here is shown as a stormwater area, and it's shown as blue, right? Well, it's only blue after a very big, large rainfall event. Most of the time, these floodplain areas are dry. So, the fact that that fern area is in... It's existing, and it's a very small, very isolated, you know, location. But the plan would be not to disturb that at all.
Okay. Is... Does Mr. Mctara, do you own the property, or when will you own the property? What's the plan for that?
I am Said Mctara. I'm the developer. And I do not own the property yet, but I'm planning to.
Okay. If we don't transmit, if we deny the application, will you still close on the property, or what are your plans?
Yes, sir. That's the plan.
That's the plan. Okay. And so, then it would be... So, then what would be your plans for its recreation use?
I have no plan for recreation use.
Okay. Anything else you want to add?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So, typically, when I approach the county for a project, like any other project, I present an idea, and I go through the sift, you know. This work, this doesn't work, and so on. But in the process, I have two partners to work with. One is the neighbors, and the other is the county staff. So, what you see right here is the result of all that interaction with both partners. This plan was not my choice. It's one final iteration that was the conclusion of all the discussions and the wishes of the neighbors and the county staff. So, nothing that you can see here is really the initial concept. So, to say that we disregarded everybody's opinion, that's not fair to say because we spent three years on this project to get this far, and $600,000 to get this far. So, it was not, you know, two-minute sketch that we are presenting here. We listened to every neighbor that participated to those meetings. And trust me, what we had before and what we have now is like day and night. And that's not because what we presented before was bad. It's because the neighbors wanted something different. So, we did something different. And owning the property is my dream, and therefore, I'll work very hard on it. The fact that I don't have a recreational plan is simply because I'm not in that world. I just don't know what to do with it in the recreational world.
Yeah. And I appreciate that. I will say that I've been on this board for eight years, and I've, to Clay's point, I think he said he's never seen a plan change so much with public input. And it has changed a lot. I'm about to talk to staff now about their input. The first time I ever met you, I think, was actually on a Zoom call with the initial application. Because I... And the only reason I remember that is it was COVID, and I remember a call about a hotel. And what I remembered was, I want to make sure that the public has input into what you're planning. And your plan has changed drastically. The reality is, of the 32 people that spoke tonight, all but one wanted to move forward. So, 31 still don't like it. And I don't think it's that they don't like you. I think what they're telling to the county commissioners, if I could preview what I heard tonight, is they're telling us, it's zoned recreational. Don't let that zoning go away. I think that's what I'm hearing. So, it's not you. I think you've done... I mean, Clay and I have worked a lot for eight years, and like he said, he's never seen something change this much with public input. But now, I want to kind of talk to staff because staff is recommending denial for the exact opposite reason, which is they are saying more density. And I want to understand staff's questions. So, thank you. Did you want to add anything else?
Certainly, if I may. So, I'm not the bad guy, okay? So, I am in between. I have an interest, and I have to come to you for it. And we all heard the neighbors. We all heard what county staff wants. So, I really have to count on your judgment and decide what to do. We have tried to accommodate the neighbors to the max because imagine, 70 lots in this property is not really terribly profitable. So, secondly, we adopted anything that county staff requested. Everything. Even this little yield was recommended by staff. So...
That's why I asked you.
What more can we do?
Do you own it, and what are your plans? Because if we vote to not transmit, it will stay recreation. And what I believe this board will be saying is, the comp plan is the comp plan. And so, that's why I asked you, what are your plans? And so, I appreciate you sharing that with me.
Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, to staff. And I'm going to ask staff questions based on the applicant's presentation. So, if you could maybe refer to theirs. Yeah. So, page 11, Jeff. So, this is the first plan. This is the first plan. And did staff review this plan?
Madam Chair, yes. Staff reviewed that plan as a conceptual plan that could potentially implement the land use change and the PD zoning.
So, under that plan, was staff saying, this is something that, you know, it's not recreation, but it's a lot of density, and we would recommend approval for this?
Yeah. Let me be really clear about that, the answer to that question. And the answer to that question is no. At no point did we say, this is the plan that staff would recommend approval of. One of the issues, and it gets to Commissioner Prizzi's line of questioning about the planned development and it being a master plan development. The golf course was always the centerpiece of the master plan development, and I think Mr. Swager and Mr. Brown stated that the golf course came first, and the residential units came around the golf course later through the years. So, we have to look at the situation on the ground and how it was developed, and the situations from a transportation standpoint. So, this property always had an unfortunate fatal flaw when it comes to our comprehensive plan and code, which was the lack of transportation connectivity. So, the discussions we had with the applicant were not necessarily about the plan, because we, I think, hopefully we were clear all along. There were going to be a lot of compatibility issues, a lot of retention of open space issues with any change that was proposed that went from any portion of recreational to a mixed-use or residential land use change. But the fatal flaw was, we have developed our comprehensive plan around a transportation network, and Mr. Swager has the diagram here that shows the roadways to the north, 122nd Street Extension, coming back through Arbor Greens. And because of the way this property was master-planned, and I assume it was under common ownership at one point and was sold off, so it wasn't without the knowledge of the owner at the time, the connectivity to those northern roadways that we have now planned is precluded.
So, the flaw was not, it's not dense enough. Really, the flaw is connectivity of any density. And is what I'm hearing you say is, like with open space, we start with the natural resources. We start with the heritage live oaks and the green space, and we build the plan around those natural resources. Is what I'm hearing you say is, because this was zoned recreational, we started first with the golf course and the recreational golf course, and then from there, ask how, what are your proposed changes?
That's correct. And Madam...
And so, no golf course there, not going to work.
Well, and you'll see in our... The bases in our staff report, there are a lot of the bases that deal with T and D, with the policies that deal with, you know, efficiently using urban infrastructure, those kind of policies. So, you might, in a vacuum, look and say, well, staff just says that the main problem with this is that it's not dense enough. Well, what we're looking at is the proposal that's in front of us, which is a very... The least, and it showed in the graphic, where the surrounding densities of even West End were orders of magnitude higher than what is being proposed, that it's incumbent upon the applicant in a policy choice for both the staff and then ultimately for the commission to decide, is this a good idea? And so, looking at the policies in our plan, that's... And that's why we put those policies in the bases.
All right. So, moving from connectivity to trips. So, now, let's move to page 21 because the applicant, I think, heard you, listened to the neighbors, and got to this plan over two and a half years. Still not enough connectivity. The only connectivity of the Newbury Road is going through a previous development that, Mr. Mctara, I don't know if you thought about that before this. That one would have been a good one to do after this, because you would have had the connectivity. But at any rate, that's built, and people are living in it. And hopefully, you heard some of their comments because this is still a small town, and all you have is your reputation. And so, hopefully, you're addressing some of those. But that's a different issue, not tonight. So, for staff, on this plan was the idea that, okay, that really, I want to just get right... So for staff, on this plan was the idea that, okay, that, really, I want to just get right to Anna's question, which is, does staff agree with the trips analysis?
And I'll let Mr. Dawson speak to that because I think there was a disagreement and it's maybe in the margins, but there was a disagreement on the methodology.
Before we do that, Chris, Mr. McTara, I called you, so you want to respond? Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
I always like challenges, so I'm fine with it. I am a developer. What I do is create the neighborhood and then I sell the lots to builders. And the builders that we sell to are national builders. They do this through different states all over. In fact, two of our clients are the biggest builders in the nation.
Lennar and?
D.R. Horton.
D.R. Horton, right.
So, so they do their.
Who built this one?
Partly Maronda and partly Lennar coming up in there.
Wait, hold on, hold on. So, so I love you all. I do. Y'all got to speak first. If y'all just will let me speak now and, and I promise, I promise, I appreciate it. Who built this one? Maronda.
Maronda.
Okay.
And the new part coming up is Lennar.
Okay.
So the, the issues about the building itself, I really don't have anything to do with. It's like when I sell my lots, my neighborhood, I'm away. I'm doing something else.
Okay, I'm going to give you some, just free advice and you can all have to listen to it. Okay? There's another Lennar development on 23rd that's causing flooding and we're hearing from the neighbors. And you're being blamed because you're the developer and you sold it to them. And no one really understands that they're a national builder. Everyone is to blame, including us. Right? I mean, we're getting our fair blame on that. So what I would ask is that you hold those builders to the same standards that you hold yourself to and that will really help in our community when you come back before us and when you go back before the community to ask for changes.
So the, the particular neighborhood that you're talking about is Terra Lane and.
Your name's on all of them.
Yes. That's why I'm proud of what I do.
I know, that's why I'm.
I defend them every second of the day. So the, the, that property has a Public Works ditch going between Terra Lane and the other neighborhood. The fact that there was a blockage in that Public Works ditch is not my fault. So if, if Public Works had maintained that ditch adequately, nothing would have happened. So now, when, when that occurred, in their own defense, Public Works staff said, oh, it's Terra Lane, it's Terra Lane. But they know that it's not true.
Okay. So, I'm sorry I got sidetracked. Let me, yeah, I don't mean to get sidetracked. Let me go back to Chris Dawson. Thank you for responding and I'm sorry.
Sure, I just want to make it clear.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, Mr. Dawson, back to this question. Does staff agree with the applicant's opinion that the trips are less than what the golf course would have been?
Madam Chair, if the board would just indulge me more than a yes or no answer on this.
Oh, please, go ahead.
So I just want to be very clear that all along, we identified the, the lack of connectivity. And, you know, we, we say transportation, but that's not just cars. That's people walking or riding bikes as well. And I think that what we said was in the absence of any kind of other connection to the existing network that runs throughout the neighborhoods there, so that somebody could walk through it, so that it's a network, that we would look for a sort of limitation, if you will, somewhere around the existing trip generation of the golf course. That's not an exact science. It's a, it's a guesstimate. Golf courses are different. So somebody might say, oh, well, you know, this is a small golf, golf course or it had a driving range and it was lighted. And so trip generation might be more or less. I don't think that I would get too tied up in the 548 versus 732 versus whatever. I think the, the idea is that there was a pretty limited impact on the roadway network and the rest of the transportation network from the golf course. And that, that what we were looking at was that's a, as a starting point in a conversation, that's a reasonable starting point. There's probably places you can go from there, but that's a reasonable starting point. I don't think we looked and said, nope, you should limit your development size to be underneath that threshold. That was never a comment from, from me. I think what we said was a reasonable starting point for sort of a, a phase of development until that connection to the network is provided would be in that range of the golf course as a starting point for our conversation. We never really sort of got past that kind of starting point. So this is what was resubmitted and it's in the range of, you know, what the golf course would have generated. Again, we could go back and forth about should you include the park or not? Does the driving range have its own trip generation as compared to the golf course? I would tell you that the Institute of Traffic Engineers says no. Its description of golf courses says that some of them include driving ranges. But I don't know whether some of those were lighted or not. And so whether it applies to this specific golf course, look, none of us went and did counts at those driveways when it was operational. So I can't tell you exactly how many West End generated. I can tell you what ITE says approximately and we can say we're in the range of that.
Okay. One more comment for staff and it was Patty Giannelli, if I hope I pronounced her name right. I think she, Giannelli, I think she just left. But I would ask staff, since they were presented with barrels of oil and pictures that EPD inspect and like tomorrow or the next day, and if there is a code violation, don't wait on us, issue it. Let's get it cleaned up and let's make sure that that property is not endangering our aquifer by which it sits on top of. Want to make a couple of comments to the citizens who spoke, again, 30 of you, because I counted 10 for, for Thomas, so 21 of you. And thank you all for really leaning in and for being here and for communicating with us. You know, some of the things that I heard, you know, from Jen Garrett, you know, she talked about those sweet old ladies that, that pull out the pickleball nets. I want you all to know that they whooped me on the pickleball court. They may be sweet old ladies, but they play to win. And that sport is eight to 88. And, and, and I've been whooped by a lot of sweet old ladies. So they may be sweet, they're trying to get you on the court so they can whoop you. But in, in all seriousness, you know, Mr. Guy said something that was really impactful. Green space is a health department without walls. Mr. Spear made a point about, you know, that he's been there for 28 years. I think it's, did he leave? I think he was sitting back there. He left, you know? He came here in 95. I was born here in 68 and I was, that's what I think you all know. This is where my dad taught me how to play golf out at West End. And, and what really bothered me about Mr. Min's sign is that it says commercial. It's being marketed as commercial property. It's recreational property until it's commercial. It's not commercial, it's recreational property. And it's been marketed as commercial and it, you know, this, the applicant made a point that in our comp plan, if it's not viable, then they have a right to change that. That's true, but, but, I mean, it's not viable because you stopped taking care of it. That's not what the code is intended for. And there are lots of viable golf courses and we're going to be, the University of Florida is trying to build one. I mean, we just heard about it, you know? And, and we just heard Meadowbrook is going to be coming back according to what they indicated. You know, Diane Mazzara said life be in it. You know, that, that, that is what I'm hearing tonight. You know, tonight, I was intending to try to come up with a compromise and I was even ready to propose that maybe we postpone this or that we continue this to see if we can have a compromise. But I, I don't, I'm not hearing any compromise. I'm actually hearing the opposite, that the comp plan is our community's plan for the vision of the future and we need more recreational spaces. I mean, tonight, tonight's hearing is literally a commercial for the Wild Spaces and Public Places ballot initiative. It, it is literally a commercial for all of you all to vote yes on that. So we have a continuous funding source to acquire places, whether it's this one or not, that the public can recreate. The green space, which is a health department without walls. You know what it's also a commercial for? And I'm going to take the privilege of saying it. It's a commercial for voting no on single member districts. You know why? Because all of you, if you had single member districts, would only be represented by one commissioner, one commissioner. And in fact, when you called the other four of us, we probably should no more go meet with you and talk to you about this than we do talk to people in Putnam County. This is really a commercial tonight for wild spaces, yes, single member districts, no. This is what I'm, this is what I am hearing. And so, you know, I appreciate staff's work. I really appreciate the applicant engaging with the public and trying to come up with a compromise that would work. But the reality is, is it starts with recreation. It starts with our green space and our community is desperately telling us now, tonight and tomorrow, preserve it, acquire more of it, take care of it, let us recreate. We need mental health. We need to walk under the trees. And so, and we need to preserve, we need to preserve what we have. So I'm not going to make a motion to continue and try to work out a compromise. I'm going to move staff's recommendation that we deny the application and not transmit.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Okay, we still got commissioners who want to speak. No, we still have commissioners who want to speak. Mr. McTara.
I'd like you to consider that what I'm offering is, is the best that can be done. Imagine this, this is a private property with its own rights.
Yes.
Mr. Min can fence this property and only the birds can get in there. So what I'm doing is I'm carving a part of it and in exchange, I'm giving the county half of it to be open for everybody to make, to benefit from it and, and make good use of it.
And what I.
I, I don't think that that's a bad deal because the private ownership has its own right as well. The owner can do whatever he wants within the rules, of course.
Recreation.
Within, within the rules. But he can fence this property and ride his bicycle on it whole day long.
Excuse me, we're, we've still got commissioners who are trying to speak.
Mr. McTara, I hear you loud and clear and I appreciate that perspective. I would say to you that our county comp plan is this community's plan. And if that's what he wants to do, fence it, then it will continue to deteriorate and perhaps you won't buy it and somebody else will. Or if you buy it, perhaps you will come to the county with a recreational use that the community and the commission will approve. And that's why I asked you, do you own it and what are your plans? But I hear you loudly clear, but the land use drives the use for the community and it's recreation. And let's, three of us change that. Come on.
All right, Commissioner Iggleland, do you remember what you want to say?
Yes, I do. So I see this as a public-private partnership to bring something to the community that would be under the purview of the county for all people. This is a compromise. I am a coastal refugee and in about 2006, I lived in Cape Coral Fort Myers area, which has now been utterly destroyed by probably the most destructive hurricane in Florida and national history. And in 2006, I had an instinct that I need to get out of there. And I came here and that gut instinct right now, and you know, I, I look to the future. Some people are better at the details. I see big picture. I don't see this property on a major corridor remaining recreational. This developer and the current property owner, they have property rights. And what they're offering to us today is an opportunity to limit what I see within the next 10 years becoming a TND with density of up to 200 units and commercial. You don't want any housing. And I think what the county does foresee, if this is not recreational, is a 200-plus residential unit development with commercial. Mr. McTara has brought to us the opportunity for recreation without having to raise the taxes of the citizens. It's a public-private partnership and I think what we have on the table today is something that we may never have again.
Thank you.
I conclude.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Anna, do you mind if I let Chuck go or do you have?
I mean, I do want to talk.
Okay, no, I know you do, if that's all right.
Did I get a second to the question?
Yeah, you got two seconds.
Oh, that's a good sign.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I have a couple of questions. I don't, I think, I guess I'll, I'll ask staff first. In terms of the planning commission, they voted unanimously to uphold the staff recommendation. And I think that it didn't have enough density. I think that that's what I heard. And it was insufficient ingress egress. There was a lack of interconnectivity in the project. And, and if those are the case, I have not heard what would the traffic impacts be to Newberry Road? Would it be more, less? If there is no connectivity, and I'm assuming, and there was no ingress egress in surrounding areas of the other developments? And the inner networking to get to those shopping areas? I'm just saying, so I'm just asking, so.
Madam Chair, I promise I'm going to answer that question, but I, I need to ask Jeff something real quick.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you for indulging me, Madam Chair.
That's okay, that's all right.
I'm sure I knew what I was talking about for a second. So I don't want to try to question the planning commission's recommendation.
I got you, yeah.
They, they made their recommendation. But I think that I can answer maybe your question, which is would this plan have a greater impact on Newberry Road? The part I'm not clear about is as compared to a golf course or as compared to something else?
Compared to anything, really. I mean, if you added housing, would that create an impact?
Yeah.
Or if you put a park there, would it be an impact? Or if you put a golf course, another golf course there, will that be the increase to Newberry Road? Would that create an issue? And with the other areas having that interconnectivity to limit folks from getting on Newberry Road, would be better to have it internal than external? So those are my questions. That's my concern. I mean, those are some of the concerns I heard also from residents. So, and, and I can tell you, just recently, matter of fact, that was yesterday, I was in the area and I, I met with some folks. And I also can tell you that turning left off of 24th Boulevard is, it's very, very hard. I had to turn right. I waited because that red light, I think that's Parker Road, red light, that is a long light. And for me to turn left, impossible. And so that's why I'm asking those type of questions. Those are my experiences and I'm just going around. I could have said that earlier, but I just wanted to go around the bush with it. But.
So Madam Chair, I don't, I don't want to say that there's no traffic on Newberry Road because that's not true. I, I don't live out there. I mean, I'll be very honest, but I know enough about Newberry Road to know that there's, there's traffic.
A lot of traffic.
I think, here's what I would say, any, any development, any kind of development, whether it's a golf course or a park or a neighborhood. or a neighborhood, um, a bank, uh, whatever, they, the majority of people going to them, the majority of people going to them in our community are going to be driving a car. Um, I, I would posit that even, um, when West End was active, the majority of people going to West End were arriving there in a car. Um, I'm not saying that nobody from the neighborhood walked there or drove a golf cart or anything else, but the majority of people probably arrived in a car. So is there going to be an impact on Newberry Road? There will be some impact on Newberry Road. I think, um, the applicant has attempted to sort of minimize what would be any additional impact on Newberry Road over and above, um, a golf course. There probably are still some differences and impacts. Homes have different, uh, times of day that they're active as compared to a golf course. But without getting into the weeds on that, um, you know, Newberry Road, um, is, it, there's a lot of development going on there. Um, it's gonna, it has capacity available, according to the Florida Department of Transportation. There is capacity available on that roadway. I'm not going to stand here and justify that to you. I'm just going to tell you that that is a fact, according to the Florida Department of Transportation, who owns and maintains that roadway. Um, we're aware of the issues at Parker Road. Um, it's a three-legged intersection. That's one of the reasons that it, the, the signal, the timing length is the, the way that it is. Um, and we anticipate that that will be better when we develop 122nd North. The timing on that signal will change. Um, it'll generally be shorter. I don't know that that'll necessarily make turning left out of 124th any easier. Um, my guess is that that will continue. And the department, um, has an increased belief that turning right on these types of corridors and making a U-turn is safer than making a left across them. That's the, that's the department's view. I'm, again, I'm not going to stand here and tell you whether people agree with that or not. I'm just telling you that the department is consistent in reducing the number of left-hand movement, left-hand turn movements on these kinds of corridors, not just here in Alachua County, throughout the state. Turning right and making a U-turn, studies show, is safer. I'm not saying it is more convenient, but it is safer. So I think, Mr. Madam Chair, what I, what I would say is, there's going to be an impact on Newberry Road, no matter what is developed here. Unless it just lays fallow. Um, that's the only case where, where nobody's driving to it. So I, that's a round, a long, long answer to tell you, yep, there's going to be an impact. But what it is, what that impact is, I think, kind of lays in your hands tonight.
Okay, on 124th Boulevard, uh, would you think the state would be willing to put a red light there?
No, I don't think so, Madam Chair. I can say that pretty much unequivocally. Now, things can change in the future. Um, the state is, um, is really great because they can do whatever they want with their roads. They don't, they don't have to get any approvals from us. So they, they create access management classifications. Um, they create, uh, you know, some context classifications. And they say, we will permit a signal at no, no more frequent than a certain distance in these types of corridors. And right now, um, we're about maxed out with that. So we could, um, we could propose that we would relocate the signal at 122nd. Um, but that would create the exact same problem in, in the other direction. Um, and we can make 122nd go through. We can't make 124th go through except up to, um, additional developments. So I don't think that that, um, is the best solution. In addition, I would just tell you that the spacing is so close that having another signal there would let people out of 124th, but it would actually slow down traffic in the corridor, um, which, which probably has its own benefits, to be perfectly honest. But it wouldn't get people through that corridor any faster.
Okay. And I also heard some other concerns. I guess this may, might be for the developer, uh, folks. Um, I, I just heard, uh, about trails and maybe a nine-hole golf course. And I guess my concern is, which is it? Will it be trails or would it be a nine-hole golf course? And if it's a nine-hole golf course, um, I guess the county would have to develop the golf course, is what I'm hearing?
Madam Chair, I'm going to let the applicant speak to that.
Okay. I just, just have questions, that's all.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Chestnut, we, um, again, we did propose to dedicate the park to the county. Um, we didn't get any consensus from the neighbors that they needed to have a nine-hole golf course put back in there in this configuration. Because we really never got to the point where we could discuss the details of what might go in the park because they just didn't want us to have this development. So we never really got to that level of, of discussing that. But, um, if it was going to be a golf course, it would be, some golf course maintenance company would probably be the company that would do the maintenance. I, I don't even think your county staff has the expertise to maintain a golf course. So if that's what the neighborhood was screaming for and that's what was decided to be done in this park, then it would probably be a contract with a company that would maintain the golf course. And that's very common for any golf course, not just golf courses that are maintained by, um, by counties or local governments. So I think that's how it would be maintained. I think it's a big if that that would be what was decided on the property. So what we proposed is to make sure that we had this connectivity, that we had trails, that we had places where the neighborhood could come into the park and they could ride their bikes and walk and go throughout the whole property and go from the villages of West End down to Newberry Road and through all the different developments. So, uh, that's what we were proposing to do, more of a passive park with nature and walking trails and biking trails, that sort of thing.
Okay, and I guess, I guess, you know, I know where I'm at on this, but it's, it's, um, I guess my, my other question, uh, in terms of the, the trail system and bike system, uh, how will that actually function with the, um, the areas? I think you had some red circles to make connectivity to some of those areas?
Right. Those were the places where connections from the trail on the current golf course property, the future county park property, would be able to connect to the neighborhood. So those are places where the neighborhood already, the neighbors, the communities adjacent, already have open space. They may have their own trails. They have, you know, locations where they now would walk to the golf course. And so we would just create those connections to make them easier so they could have a connection, actually, where we would build right up to their property line so they could connect and have the multi-use trails. So, yeah, we propose those throughout the perimeter so that all of the neighboring communities could use the trails.
And I think, uh, some questions that were presented to you guys, I think they asked a question about, uh, will there be a homeowners association? If there's a homeowners association, how will all of this work with the trails and all of that stuff when people, um, say that they don't want folks in their neighborhood anymore?
Well, there would be a homeowners association for the development. Homeowners, if, if the county accepted the park, which we're donating the 37 acres, then the homeowners association would just be focused on the seven, the 70 home sites or the 140 home sites, whatever it was. Um, and they would, they would maintain those facilities. They would maintain any private sidewalks, private landscaping. There's another, you know, 10 acres of open space associated with that that they would have to maintain in any of those private recreation facilities. Um, if the land was dedicated to the county, then the county would own the park and they would maintain the park just like you do any of your other parks. So the thing that, um, the theme that concerns me is there seems to be no credit for the fact that we are proposing a park. Everybody's saying, you, they want a park. That's what we hear over and over. We want recreation, land use, uh, we want a park. And we're giving the county a park. I just, it amazes me that there's not more consideration for that. I, I, I mean, just like, you know, you have many parks that are smaller than the land that we're giving. There's, this property could be developed into a wonderful park. Um, and the developer is proposing to give it to the county. So, um, I hope you all will take that into consideration as well.
Sure.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to add one thing, that the, the language about the homeowners associations was inserted because of some input early on that if there's recreation amenities, um, who's going to take care of them, who's going to pay for them? And there was a concern that some of the HOAs that exist in the existing neighborhoods would be stuck with the bill. And the point of that was to make sure that that was clear, that that would not be the case. That was the intention.
Or it could be vice versa. You know, the folks there probably don't want them there, is what I'm seeing. That's, that's why I asked those questions. Uh, Madam Chair, I think that those are, just as some of the issues I just wanted to bring up that I heard, uh, from residents and stuff like that, in terms of their issues and their concerns. Um, um, you know, I didn't hear much about the stormwater stuff either. In terms of, um, uh, how, how that works with this development and all of that stuff with, um, flooding and stuff like that occurring that we have issues with. I think that it stated that it had to meet the current standards of the 100-year floodplain. So that's not, not really an issue, but I would love to hear some of that, though. But anyway, that's okay. Um, my mind is made up, so, uh, I'm done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, County Attorney, did you want to interject something here?
Madam Chair, there's been a lot of talk about the idea of a park or the dedication of 37 acres, uh, of the recreation land use area to the county. Without knowing the details of how that would work, and I know that Mr. Swager included it in, in his, um, proposed policies, but my understanding is that that is relatively new and staff hasn't had a chance to look at the details. Potentially, you're looking at an exaction in that situation. So it's not just a gift that the county can just accept. This is, we're considering an application. We're considering an approval that the developer is asking for. And in giving us something, we then have to offset the impacts of that. So, so if they're giving it to us to say, this is going to mitigate the impact of this 70-unit development on your parks and recreational facilities, we then have to look at what would the, what would the impact fees for parks be for a development like this? And everything above that, the value of this dedication, we would have to pay for or offset, potentially, depending on how this is structured. So it is not necessarily going to be a free gift or dedication. It, it might come with an additional price.
Okay, Commissioner Pritzia.
Well, he just answered one of my questions. Um, and, and I, I guess I wanted to respond both to the applicant, um, the, the developer and my colleague, Ms. Eagle Glenn. You had the opportunity to design the park as a part of your development. And the community, I think, in the questions that they proposed to you that you never answered, spelled out a lot of the things that they would have liked to seen in that park. Um, things that you also mentioned when you did a presentation to us, things like a playground, a dog park, a driving range. And connectivity is a big issue. And there, I think there's opportunity through the way that this park could have been developed to create at least more connectivity for bikes and pedestrians and things like that. Um, but you chose not to do that. And I'm not sure why you chose not to do that, um, but you didn't. Um, and so I feel, I feel left with, with no sort of recourse, right? Because you're saying you could give us, you could give us the park and you're going to give us some land, which we may or may not have to pay for. And we would be stuck with paying all of the costs of that development, the taxpayers to pay all that development, which the houses that you're going to put in the middle of that then get the benefit of selling by living in the middle of a park. So they're going to have very high values that you're going to get the benefit of, but we would have the responsibility of maintaining that as well as the stormwater as well as consideration of how much, how we would even pay for all of those amenities. So I feel like while I hear you and I hear what you said about working with the community, and I think you tried to listen to kind of their general idea, which was, they want green space. And so you're like, okay, well, we'll give them green space. We'll just surround the green space and we'll put the development in the middle. But I don't think you were really listening to the community and what they were saying they wanted and needed from that development in order for it to make sense for them. And I think that they gave you that opportunity. And I think, um, my other question was going to be, did you talk to staff about this proposal and how would this proposal work? But I've just heard that, that in fact, hasn't happened yet. Um, and so, um, I have the answer to that question. And so I just, um, I just, you know, it's just, it, I have to say, I know how much you spent and I know how much you've worked on this. And, um, it, it just is unfortunate that even after all that time, that, that there was an inability to really hear what the community was saying to you. Um, and so I'd encourage you, if you go back to the drawing board yet one more time, if you get this recreational land use, maybe listen to what the community wants to have in those spaces. And perhaps you could come up with an economically viable op, opportunity for that recreational land use. Um, and I wanted to say a special thank you to Thomas Hawkins because he also made my points in a lot of his presentation that, I think, to my, to my fellow commissioner, like, I don't think this has a chance of ever being a TND unless our comprehensive plan is gutted. Because right now, our comprehensive plan is laid out such that this hasn't met the validation in the study of our comprehensive plan yet, in every way, shape, or form. The TND form was definitely not because of the connectivity. And now this development. And so I don't, I think threatening the community with that TND is kind of disingenuous. Because it's, and unfair.
Okay.
Because I, I just don't think that that's true. Um, I mean, I think it could happen if, if, if we had a commission that wanted to gut our comprehensive plan. And so just as much as this was a referendum on wild spaces and single-member districts, it was also a referendum on the commissions that stand by our comprehensive plan. And I just, I, uh, yeah, that's all I wanted to say. And I, I am ready to vote.
Commissioner Eagle Glenn?
Yes, I just wanted to ask Commissioner Cornell. You had mentioned that you originally thought that you were going to motion for continuing this hearing. Could you please elaborate what your original reasoning for that was?
I don't have that reason anymore.
Excuse me, excuse me. All right.
Uh, Commissioner Wheeler, have you commented or?
Not yet. I'm, I'm, I have a question for Mr. Muktara.
I'll wait for you.
All right. Um, Mr. Muktara, I, you, you said something interesting to me. And I don't know how developers move property along, but that what happens is you buy property and then you sell lots to, uh, developers or to individuals. Okay, to, so if, in developing this property at this place, you would then sell those, those spots, those lots or plots off to whoever it is that's developing them? To the builders?
Yes.
So you would no longer own it then?
Right.
Okay, so you're, you're going to purchase it to move it along?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you. That's, that's what I needed to know. All right, Commissioner Cornell.
Okay, so, um, again, I want to thank Jay Brown, Clay Swanger, Mr. Muktara. I think you guys have worked really, really hard to come up with what you think is a community compromise. To my colleagues, the slide that really hit it for me was this slide with the X's all around it. And, and for the public, this is the slide here. Earlier today, item nine, we approved the Jonesville Business Park. 554 units, 166 group housing units, 10,000 square feet of commercial on 68 acres. It's zoned commercial with no objection. These folks are not saying to us, they object to development. They're saying that our comp plan has laid out where that development should be. And more importantly, that it, we need to have recreational green space to absorb not only the new development, but the existing development that currently exists. That's what they are saying. And, and you nailed it, Commissioner Pritzia, that until this commission changes and this public tells us to gut our comp plan, this is our comp plan. This is the public's plan to preserve recreational green space. And I would tell folks, there's an election coming up. There's an election. You get to choose who protects your comp plan. You get to choose who represents you. What I heard throughout the entire day, Commissioner Eagle Glenn, was no objection to the same exact size, 68 acres, with a lot of density. Little bit farther west. But our comp plan says, we need to have recreation space. And you know what else that's, they're going to tell us on the master plan? We need more of it. We have a, even with this, we have a deficiency. So I was thinking, maybe we can come up with a compromise with the builder and the community. But you know what? The compromise is flipped because this needs to stay recreational. And if Mr. Muktara buys it, then we can talk to him about the master recreational plan that was presented by Paul. That's what, because that's what the comp plan calls for. It calls for that. And until we gut the comp plan, that's what it calls for. So it's not just West End. Thank you, we cares. You spoke actually for our entire community. You spoke for the people that live in Tioga. You spoke for the people that live in Arbor Greens. You spoke for the people that live in Jonesville. You spoke for the people that- You spoke for the people that live in Hale Plantation. I took my kids to play soccer in, I helped build that park, by the way. That was, that was my thing. That's what got me involved in government, is my kids played soccer. I don't know why they played soccer. And I spent my days driving around this place, starting at Canapa Hall, and then out to Jonesville, and I was like, "We need more green space," you know? And so, I saw, though, that when we developed this comp plan, and we had 75 acres back in 1980, somebody was brilliant. We probably should have had more. But, and that's where we are right now. And, and we're saying to the community, "If you agree with us, renew this thing for another 10 years, so that we can acquire more of it." You know, because we need to do that. And I heard y'all loud and clear. And what I heard tonight was, "Don't push this thing off. We got the gold right now." Thomas hit the nail, nail on the head. This is recreational land use. It's not going to be a TND. And what I would say to staff, this is one thing that wasn't in the staff report, but I heard it from Jeff, lead with that. And so, if someone comes up and says, "I got recreation, and I want to do something with it," well, what's the recreation? And, and to our, you know, you told us five months ago, "Well, give us some uses. We don't have any recreational land uses." And many of you all helped us develop the recreational land uses. You know, that was...
...zoning and recreational.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, and that, and, and we added pickleball. That was one of the things that we added, you know? I mean, because we listened to you all.
In full disclosure, I got to say, I told all these people that you were a pickleball fan.
Well, the little old ladies know how to whip me on the court. But, so anyways, I don't, I didn't mean to make this a speech, but, but that's why, Commissioner, that's why. The community said, "Don't compromise on something that you established in 1980, and you renewed, and you've elected people to protect our community." I'm ready to vote.
All right. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Cornell, motion, made the motion to, to accept staff recommendation, and you...
Not transmit.
Not transmit, and somewhat...
Same idea.
Didn't matter.
Well, I'm just trying to make sure that the record shows it, that's all.
Doesn't matter.
All right. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Like, sign and oppose?
Post.
All right, thank you. That motion passes four to one. Commissioner. All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen.
I think we're adjourned, right?
Uh, yes. Yes, we are. All right. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.